... meeting to enter, Madam Clark, would you read the role, please?
Yes, Ms. Polk.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Hurd.
Motion for the agenda.
Sorry.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If it's same sign, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our third, I think, annual meeting with our legislators, and we have three of you here, which is fabulous, and I thank you for coming. It's always difficult to try to arrange all of your schedules and all of our schedules and all of everybody else's schedules to get everybody here on time. But I'm glad you're here, and what I'd like to do, David, once you get up here, we're gonna just, we've got a smaller crowd today, so take as much time as you want, probably introduce yourselves, so we have a couple of new council people, and if you'd introduce yourselves, maybe tell us what committees you're on, and maybe just a flavor of what you think this session might look like, and then hopefully we'll all have some questions to ask you and put you on the spot a little bit. If you would, as you speak, also, the microphones are hot, and if you don't speak kind of into the microphones, those folks out there can't hear you and you don't get recorded. So Jeff or Bill, I don't care, fight over yourselves.
Well, I think every good senator refers to their house member. I don't know where it's spelled.
That's not what you said before you came in. Nick, come on up here, through the gate right there.
Well, I'll go first, and I'm Bob Cressing, and I am the state representative for House District 59, which is Cedar Falls, about eight percent of the city in my district. And I currently serve on Commerce, Local Government, Public Safety, I'm ranking member of that committee. I was assigned a new committee this year, Environment Protection, and then I serve on a Budget Committee that deals with economic development, along with Senator Dossler. Some of the things that I think are gonna be significant, and I've used this to describe what our budgeting process is like, that if you look at the state in general for a budgeting, we do three things: we medicate, we educate, and we incarcerate. When you add those three things together, that's about ninety percent of our state budget. And then the ten percent is where all the other discussions occur, too. I would say on education, you and I is going to play a significant role in the discussions. You and I has a large percentage of students that are Iowa students, and they pay in-state tuition. And so when things begin to deal with budgets and budget cuts, they have far greater impact on you and I than they do Iowa or Iowa State. So, look forward to those discussions, and, you know, it doesn't take long to, after you live in this area, that you see the value of the benefit the university provides economically, educational, you know, culturally. It's a big part for our community, and I will continue to advocate for that. There are some other issues, you may have heard, the Iowa Corps, I think, hopefully we can put that to bed, put it to rest, because, you know, where some groups were pretty worried about Iowa Corps, and it was taking their rights and liberties away and those things. Hopefully, we can take care and remove that. Preschool is gonna be another issue. I'm sure you've read or heard that the cost of families today with childcare is a significant expense to those families. And Iowa actually leads the country in two-parent household incomes. So it is gonna be a significant issue, and I had a chance to tour Kitterell School, which has been established as a childcare center, and we should be doing more of those things. It's already proven fact that early child development occurs the day they're born, and the roles that we can play to help that child learn and play a role within our community. The other one that is pretty significant is our water quality. And I know cities are being asked to do certain things with regard to improvement or how they discharge waste and those things. I think we can do additional things in the rural areas to address that. That's gonna be a major challenge, though, because not everybody quite agrees with that. Just from an economic development perspective, look at it this way: if our water is dirty already, we already know that. And we got two large cities, Cedar Rapids and Des Moines, relying on surface groundwater for their drinking. As water continues to deteriorate, how are we gonna create an economy or grow our economy when? So I think we need to address it. I could go on, but I'll let the other two have.
We'll have questions about most of the things we talked about. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Clark. Always a pleasure to come for City Council. I'm Senator Bill Dossler, and my district includes all Waterloo, Evansdale, Elfrin Heights, Raymond, the area of Washburn, and now the city of Gilbertville. So with some of the fourth ward population dropping off during the last census, I picked up a little bit more south, and so a little bigger area. But the committees that I serve on this year will be the same as have been. We just had our leadership election, and I was elected Assistant Majority Leader again. So that's a major role, just to begin with. And the committees I serve on, first of all, the Appropriations Committee budgets up for Economic Development, which oversees the budgets for the Economic Development Authority, the Department of Workforce Development, and also the Department of Cultural Affairs. We have a little bit of the Iowa Finance Authority in there for some housing stuff, low-income housing, and then also the Pur Board, which oversees relationships or works with relationships between government and its employees. So when you're on the Budget Sub-Chair, you're automatically on the Full Appropriations Chair in the Senate, so I sit on the Full Appropriations, so every budget you have an opportunity to review and glance at least, and make comments about, before they come to the floor, in the committee process. Then for my standing committees, they're really focused more on economic development, worker relationships. I'm on the Economic Growth Committee, the Business and Labor Committee, and sit on Ways and Means, the Taxing Authority, and then when we got the bill dealing with TIF, I ended up working with that to try to pare down, so we didn't mess with TIF in a way that would harm that economic development tool. And then also, I sit on Human Resources, you might know I got a degree in biology, some closest thing to a scientist they have there, except for Senator Joe Saim, who happens to be a veterinarian. So I usually get all the bills dealing with healthcare relationships, doctors, nurses, those kind of things, so, you know, I gotta go brush up on quite a bit of that. So it keeps me pretty busy, and I just came back from Washington, D.C., in a conference and dealing with long-term care and seniors, which is an ever-growing problem here in Iowa. And it's also leading to some of the other problems we have, is we get older, you know, we don't have the youth that we need to have to drive our local economy. So the kind of things that I'm gonna be working on this legislative session and feel that's gonna be there, besides the gas use tax, those kind of things that we hear about, I'm really gonna be trying to focus on trying to do more in economic development. The Cedar Valley Tech Works is of real importance, and as legislators as a group, working with the House and the Senate in a bipartisan way, we put real money into that. Unfortunately, the governor vetoed it. And Bob and I were just meeting at the Tech Works and know how important that could be for the Cedar Valley and our community. And advanced manufacturing, the stuff that they've been doing with the 3D printing is totally amazing, and it's growing exponentially. So we need to really be able to keep up and continue to provide the right kind of tools for that. So we're gonna try to make an effort to try to find some more resources, you know, early on, so that they can continue the good work the university in Northern Iowa's doing in conjunction with Cedar Valley Tech Works. And that's gonna be tough, because everybody's heard and seen some of the joint appearances between the Majority Leader Micron Stahl and the Speaker of the House, Craig Paulson. You know, they've been telling everybody, you know, we're gonna have a tough year, and probably the next couple of years are gonna be tough, because, as you know, and we also hear from our supervisors, a real concern about the commercial property tax and how that affects local governments. And I know in one of the more recent meetings that there were some comments made that, well, we're gonna continue to backfill those like we said we would on the state level, but in some of the out-years, we might have to come back and revisit it. And I think that prompted Senator Stahl to get pretty upset, and I think he has the same feeling that my colleagues have. I think he slapped the table and said, "That's etch in stone, and we're gonna make our commitments towards cities and counties when it comes to backfilling the property tax that we committed to." And that's number one, in our book, when you make a commitment, to go back and revisit it and say, "Well, we meant it for a little while, but we're not meaning it for the long haul." It's gonna be a real problem. So with the budget, one good thing, you know, we did have a little, the revenue estimating conference met, there's just a minor uptick in revenues for projections, and I think a lot had to do with energy prices, consumers having more money in their pockets, and driving the projection on the committee will move up. So that's a good thing, although it's not really significant in our big budget, but at least it wasn't the projections that some people thought they were gonna drop it instead of move it up a fraction, you know? So that's a good thing. Some of the other areas that I've been hearing about in the Department of Cultural Affairs, you know, one of the things we talked about and led into this was the youth and making sure that we've got the right kind of workers to fill the kind of technology jobs that are starting across the state, and we're trying to develop right here in the Cedar Valley. We need to maintain and capture the youth that we have in our area, plus individuals that are coming to our region's universities, and I'll let Jeff talk about that, those issues that you and I. But, so, one of the things is that we gotta continue to build on our communities, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Cedar Valley area, to make it an attractive area for young people, once they come to our university and people who stay here. We don't want them saying there's anything to do, because there is plenty, and with our, being one of the great places on trails, not just only bike trails, but water trails, and trying to develop those kind of things, we need to have resources that we can give to our cities and counties to be able to continue to make, you know, cultural life issues being up there. I know that Governor Branstad and his campaign talked about Iowa Nets, which is, he was looking for some type of a legacy program that would replace the Vision Iowa Community Attraction and Tourism programs. Right now, we haven't really done a very good job of putting resources into them, and for years, it was twelve and a half million dollars a year, and then they cut back to the governor's proposal, zero, but we brought that back up with this House and Senate working together, about five million a year. And that's far from the kind of dollars we need to put in to be able to continue to move our communities forward. So I do know that, in speaking with the Director of the Department of Cultural Affairs, Mary County, she's looking at trying to do some kind of program, and I'd be willing to work with the governor, as long as we're gonna put real money in it, we're gonna move forward. You know, just creating a legacy program that you don't put any resources in, just have your name on, you know, they're not gonna cut it. So if we're gonna change Vision Iowa to Community Attraction Tourism Program into something else, we need to put real resources behind it, so we can do some good, and it just doesn't show. So that's economic development. I'm on boards that are centered around that. I sit on the Innovation Council, and really, that's kind of the Bob Board that does the recommendations for funding for technology areas, and I know we have Randy Pilkington at the University of Northern Iowa, sits on that board, and that's where we really need to put the dollars into the Tech Works area, to put it into there, so it can be disseminated to the Cedar Valley. So I'm gonna continue to work on that. We've gotta continue to upgrade our workforce. Bob and I just heard today, even though with the efforts that we're doing in advanced manufacturing and training people, we're gonna still fall way short. So the war for talent's a real thing, and we've gotta continue to focus on those kind of efforts, and I could go on forever.
Yeah, let's give somebody else, take a break.
Slide on, let somebody else go.
Well, you just came in, why don't you introduce yourself to those of you that don't know you, and I'm glad you made it home.
Sure, yeah.
Just give us a little bit about yourself, and then we're gonna get in some questions.
Okay. First, I apologize for being late.
Okay. I appreciated the email letting you know that you were gonna be late.
The legislative, the new legislators are down there, so. I will say that Timmy Brown-Powers and I have already started bipartisan work together. I borrowed one of her pens today to sign. But this will be my third term in Iowa Legislature, I'm, you know, from Cedar Falls, and I actually am a little different makeup of the committees I'm on, still on appropriations, which I've been every year, and then this year I'll be on Judiciary, Economic Growth, which we all work together on some things, Bill, and then Local Government, which is a, Mayor Cruz is a material. I'll be looking at the possibility of running the city from a dead bill again, I think that was, at least from my perspective, was a good bill, and so we'll try to run that through our local government. Looking forward to your questions, and looking forward to this next session, if I will hold a panel.
Very good, thanks, Paul. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Hold a mic just a little bit more towards you, if you wouldn't mind, and don't. Very perfect, very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Newsflash, Waterloo and Cedar Falls are in the same room together, which is a good thing, Mayor Cruz and the council in Tyburn. We do have some common interests that we need to work on together as a Cedar Valley, and I think that's a good message going forward. My committees will be State Government, I'll be the Chair of that again. So as most of you know, that's a potpourri of subjects, all of which people just agree on, as Republicans and Democrats, no controversy there whatsoever. And so we'll sort through those regular issues. Vice Chair of three other committees, overall appropriations, where we serve with Bill, and Veterans Affairs, and then as well, Vice Chair of Administration and Regulation, which is an individual budget that covers about twenty-plus state departments, including the governor's office itself. Also serve on Economic Growth, where we're likely to have a broadband discussion again this year. Hopefully, it's a little more progressive and actually invest in increasing the speeds around Iowa. I think last year's bill had some problems in that area, and I think Cedar Falls in particular could be a model of how to do it right. And then finally, I serve on Transportation, and have served there every year in the Senate, and we're likely to have a road use tax fund debate. In the past, I have supported additional investment in our vertical infrastructure, roads, bridges, you name it. It's no stretch to say that we're trying to maintain and have a 21st century transportation system with 20th century money. The last time those revenues were adjusted was 1989, and I was one year out of high school, floating on the Pacific Ocean in the Navy. So it's a once-in-a-thirty-year debate, and the governor has signaled his interest that it should be a priority. We're thankful for that. Those of us in the Senate who've been for it and have pushed for it in the past appreciate the help from the executive branch. I actually think there's a good window of opportunity for bipartisan discussion, and, you know, for you as well as others, it's probably not just gonna be a gas tax debate, and shouldn't be, because, as we know, transportation technology and the way in which we fund our current system, if it is reliant on the gas tax, will not be as reliable of a revenue stream in the future, because nearly every technology is encouraging us to use less gas. So you will see other ideas that we hope will reset the conversation for decades, really, and it's necessary. No other region of Iowa, in my view, based on what I know about state projects, will benefit from that increased investment. We're seeing Highway 63, we have good problems, I call them, in Cedar Falls, density with the growth around the industrial park, those are good problems. You still have to manage them and invest in that infrastructure, so traffic can move in and out of there efficiently. The Avenue of Saints, north of our area, still needs significant improvements because of the safety hazard of those at-grade crossings. So if you look at the mix of needs that we have here in Cedar Valley, there's probably no other region that'll benefit more from that investment. That's why I have been a yes in the past, and hope to keep that conversation positive in the next session. I'll hit three items of priorities that I think are both statewide and for our region. First and foremost, we get to have, finally, a discussion about long-term, stable, fair funding for the University of Northern Iowa. It's high time we've had it, it's been about thirty years since that formula's actually been discussed meaningfully. The Board of Regents has teed us up for it with their first out-of-the-box proposal, the performance-based funding proposal. That's the name that it's being called by, but most of that change is the per pupil funding. Sixty percent of their proposal deals with per pupil, and then the other forty percent deals with performance-based indicators like graduation rates and the kind of things that we should be measuring the university's by. So I think that's very important for our area. The Regents' proposal, fully implemented, means about $26 million additional into the Cedar Valley economy, because that's what it'll mean for the University of Northern Iowa, and we all the second, third-largest employer in our area, not to mention the opportunities for Iowa kids all over the state to come to the University of Northern Iowa and build a better life for themselves. Ninety-two percent of you and I students are in-state. So it's both important for our region, but also important to keep our universities competitive, all three of them, competitive for years to come. You don't get that conversation very often, and so we believe this is the year where there's a window of opportunity to do that, and finally, provide the resources that the University of Northern Iowa deserves. Secondly, I mentioned the road use tax fund. I believe there's also a window of opportunity, probably a once-in-a-thirty-year opportunity to have that discussion, and as I said earlier, our region should be front and center in why that's needed. And then finally, the overall budget. Iowa has gotten great grades relative to its peers around the country. We're generally in the top five of ten states when you compare balanced budget surpluses and our ability to meet our obligations. I don't think that changes. Even with the current revenue estimate, it's roughly a little over five percent. It's down from historic highs of around eight percent because of the commodity markets, corn and soybeans prices are down, so we're gonna see a dip. But it isn't gloom and doom. We can still meet our obligations, in particular for our local schools, which we haven't done a very good job of, but also the obligations that we've made to you with the commercial property tax cut. There should be no reason we have to backslide on any of those, at least not because of the finances. And people might have different opinions about the long-term investment in that, and that's fine, but we shouldn't say that we can't do it because of the overall state budget and the revenues are coming in. We can make priority decisions, responsible decisions, still have a balanced budget, and there'll still be a healthy surplus. And with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions. We do appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I will say, thank you for maintaining three of the Midwest's best golf courses, because with this balmy December weather, on Saturday, we were out at Gates and got in around, and who'd have thought that in Iowa in December?
Very good. Thanks, all of you gentlemen, very much. I'm just gonna open, I have several questions, but I'll not call it at that time. So I'll open it up to Nick and John, too, to whoever wants to ask first, if you have any, if you don't, I'll start the conversation. My priorities haven't changed much, Jeff, and I guess I'd like you to address, and any of you, as a matter of fact, I'm just only, I'm asking Jeff, because he's the one that's, I go to most for the pension issue, the 411 issue, what we can expect, and both of you, or two of you, have made comments about state naked commitments that you're not holding to. That was a commitment made that you haven't held to. And as Jeff knows, and all of you know, I think that I'm passionate about that, and we had a meeting in Des Moines last week, a couple weeks ago, with the board, and where are we on pension reform? Pension reform is a big picture versus reinstating the 3.79 percent that we were promised twenty years ago.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna ask a tough question about casinos.
Well, we can do that later.
Which is also in my committee, and we'll have to talk about that this year, I think, a little bit. Well, 411 in particular, there are actually four pensions in Iowa, and I chair the committee that's responsible for those. 411 in particular, the number-one issue with it is the state has backed out on its original promises. But for that, we probably wouldn't even be discussing, because today, that means about seventy to eighty million in promises that were supposed to go into that system are not there. So any discussion of 411 has to begin with the state being a partner again. You know that even with that problem, the current glide path for the city's contribution will be a downward trend. The 411 systems put out their projections, you're likely to see a small decrease this year, and then over the next, I think, five to seven years, you'll see a decline in your situation.
So imagine the benefit to cities if we had that decrease, plus the input of the state.
Right. And when you consider that when the state puts one dollar into the 411 system, it is the cleanest formula in the capital for dollar-for-dollar property tax reduction. So there's a benefit there, too, for the taxpayers, and it's the right thing to do, it was an original promise. So the 411 system has already reached out to me, they've had a board meeting, their number-one priority will be to ask for that to be reinstated, we're already drafting a bill, and we'll have it ready. That's the debate that we intend to have in the Senate. Now, on comprehensive reform, you know, as a broader topic, I'm open to looking at all of the range of ideas that people have, but what we're not open to is a free-for-all on the floor, where people are making million-dollar decisions without any evidence to back it up. And to be quite frank, there hasn't been very many of those proposals that have been put on the table. So if people want to explore those ideas in a responsible way, we have to ask the boards to look into that, and require them to do that, and I've always been open to that. We shouldn't be afraid of that evidence. But that shouldn't also shift the debate away from the state actually keeping its promises, and that'll be my priority.
Anybody else who wanna weigh in on that at all?
Well, I just, I would just say that I know that the Senate had proposed to backfill the funding. Had we had the opportunity in the House to vote for it, I would have supported it if no vote was taken. And I think another clear example of that is allowable growth. You know, based on Iowa's code, it states that session starts the second Monday of January, the governor gives his State of the State speech the next day, and then the state, the legislature, has thirty days to set a lawful growth. Well, last year, that wasn't done either. Very disappointing, and I can just tell you, not only have I heard about the 411 issue, but I've heard from school boards. And what we've done by not doing that is creating that situation where local school boards have to deal with property taxes locally. And it's sad that we didn't address allowable growth. I think, hopefully, legislators heard from their local school boards and heard from their cities on the need to fulfill our, what we're supposed to do, and hopefully, we get those accomplished.
I just couldn't say I support Jeff's effort on the 411 issue. We need to make up that shortfall, and I think if you had those resources, you put it into the fund, it would've made a big difference, and we wouldn't, cities wouldn't be dipping into the taxpayers' pockets to make up the difference. The state would've kept their commitment, so hopefully, we'll get something done this year.
I'll address it, too. I mean, I talked to you and Mayor Cruz both about this issue, and, you know, look back into the history of it, and, you know, when it was originally formulated, it was designed to help this system get up and running and have a strong system, which I think, you know, in some sense, you can still consider a very good system and sustainable. And I agree with Jeff, you know, we should continue to look at an overall comprehensive outlook and plan and reform of how we can continue to keep it sustainable and right for everyone in 411 and all of the systems. But that being said... But that being said, you know, it was, the three point seven percentage was ended under, you know, a Democratic legislature and a Democratic governor, and it hasn't been, from my perspective, it hasn't been talked about, at least in a Republican caucus, is something that's going to be, quite frankly, you know, viable this year, especially with the legislature in Congress. So I'm just trying to be realistic in saying Democratic caucus may be talking about it, and maybe it's going to be on the table. I just don't see it as something that's talked about much in our caucus and as a viable option. So just letting you know that.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'll ask one more, and then I'll pass it off again. On the property tax backfill, wasn't there a sunset on that backfill for, what, three years? Or it wasn't, it wasn't to go on forever, was it? I thought the property tax backfill had a...
It was an obligation.
It was a continuation, yeah.
We're committed to that too, on that.
We did a phase in, over time, of the reduction in the rate, which is what we've done for all of our tax cuts, so that we can adjust to what we're going to need to. But I think it's a long-term obligation based.
Five percent, then five percent, then starts working up, you know, over seven years to get to finally.
Okay. Well, good, and I appreciate all of your comments. We depend on that heavily. We're still dealing with how that reduction in property tax affects the TIP districts. As you guys know, there's a direct relationship with that lack of revenue being generated there that we're trying to deal with, so we need that. Appreciate that.
And I do know that there are, have been questions brought up about when you have a place of business where you have commercial business downstairs and apartments up, does that, how is that figured in? Is the residential go right away or, you know, what? So I think that our attention was originally was that commercial and the apartments were going to be separate, but, you know, when you get into these things, it kind of depends on how the Department of Revenue's looked at it, and then we might have to make some adjustments down the road. So if they don't look at it the same way the legislature, I think, I don't know what our intent was. So it's something they're still trying to sort out.
Just like I think there is a, right now, the Department of Revenue has issued a ruling where they're trying to make an assumption that if there's a building, the typical scenario is the upper floors are residential, the main floor is commercial, and they want to just say the whole thing's residential. And I would hope that we could gain some legislative support for not supporting that.
Michelle, we're aware of that. I've actually had local property owners who alerted us to that and were aware of it. The department needed to make some decision because of the timing of the tax year, but they're well aware that, especially on the Senate side, the leadership knows that that's the decision they made, and that doesn't honor the spirit of what we passed. That would be absolutely silly to take them all to a residential rate. And it also creates a bad situation for what we're trying to actually do in our downtown areas, which is mixed use. We want those commercial businesses to be viable and strong, and then we want the kind of housing that people want in the downtown area. And to have both of them things working against each other is kind of silly. So we're aware of that. The department's aware of that, and there'll be a debate about fixing that.
Sure. So I have two things that don't require state money, just allow us to do them on our own. And I know, just give you that, Senator, you got to use that name from me last week.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll leave a couple.
Thanks.
For you. And the first two, it's basically a level playing field for franchise fees. We're represented by municipal utilities, and the state law does not allow any franchise if there's a municipal utility. So we're asking these guys to help us get that in America. You guys can do it, you have a decision to make. And so we don't in Cedar Falls, so we're trying to get that passed, so that's an option. A lot of cities do that, I mean, a lot of the big cities do that, Green Village. And so that's a state law that would require a change in state law, so it's not state money. It's the city, then would have to then decide to do that, and so we would have to take that decision. We're looking to do it right away, maybe in four or five years. I know when this, when the commercial rollback's already in place, and it'll be one more year, but the other one, the multifamily, is sort of a phase, will be, take four, five, six, seven years to get fully in place. Once it's in place, it'll be a lot of forty percent drop in that tax from cities down, so we're looking at allowing that to hopefully take place in the next few years. Then, as Walt mentioned, self-funding general application bond debt. Right now, the state law does not allow us to borrow in a sense from ourselves. Every city has, we have to segregate funds in different areas for bonding and so on. So we can borrow from ourself in some areas, but not other areas. So we can borrow money from ourself cheaper, a cheaper rate. If you're through a bonding, you go to New York City or Chicago and sell bonds and pay attorneys to do that process. So we're looking at the option to do that. Walt mentioned that. Passed the Senate two years ago, and it didn't get passed the House. So one of you guys, one House or Senate, hopefully you can start that, and one can, because we had it passed from one House, and it was needed from the other House. So those are the first two. The other ones are, we have, there's a question in terms of the state sales tax or flood recovery. We have a project that was approved by board, and it's flood, which we're talking about, City Council. You guys meet it tonight at what time?
Five-thirty. Oh, I'm sorry, is it the regular council meeting?
Yeah, when you start, five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
So we start at five. So we meet, Nick and I may meet a little before, because we have to drive there, and we start at five, committee. So if we leave, there's nothing personally you guys say.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so those are some things, and I can say the rest of them are part, Walt, I know this, there's another one, a funding to encourage, the third, you know, D is, is the state government encouraging some studies that could, absent government services, studies to try to coordinate, tell aid, work together, and sometimes twenty, and also another project, another alignment, D actually is part of that, because you encourage it, but there's a lot of state laws that this, that don't allow us to do things. We, you and I have a lot of stuff that someone can't do because of portability of pensions. So there's a number of things. State law does not allow us to do certain things. So that's a lot of twenty, so there's a number, twenty, excuse me, there's a number of things on here. So we, I know Jeff and Bob are, he'll be there last week and went to an hour and a half, I think. So thank you for having us today and then and here both. So thank you, and thanks for inviting us.
Good, John.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, councilman, anybody got any questions? Staff that's here, Michelle or Eric, either one, I've got more questions I can ask, if you could bring your point.
Are you?
Yeah, sure.
I'll just add on to John. One of the things that I think we're all doing as well is engaging in a greater Cedar Valley alliance. They have a legislative agenda as well. You know, we're really talking about city matters. Of course, we're all tied in the same, I guess, economic ecosystem, so to speak. And so the things that they're promoting too would be of equal importance to, I think, both cities as well, to gain economic competitiveness in this region, in the state. So could that really...
Hey, guys, we all use TIP, and we all think that we use it well, and are good stewards of that. We went through a battle last year, there were some changes made. Is that going to be an issue again this year?
Well, I can just share briefly. I know that TIP, when I was on the planning zoning commission in Cedar Falls, Cedar Falls used it appropriately and used it in a manner that benefited the community as a whole, particularly the industrial park area out there has seen significant growth. What I've seen with TIP is, you know, if it's that ninety-ten rule, or however you want to look at it, is, you know, the majority of cities are using it in appropriate ways, and then there was a few that weren't. And so, so the idea was to punish everybody for that. And, you know, I, you know, we did some changes, and so, and some of the changes you might not have liked, but they're there. But my encouragement is that going into this session, you know, unless I hear of some bad actors out there using TIP in the wrong way, I can't see any changes additionally that are needed for that. Yet it's provided a good economic tool for cities across the state. Now, I would think that some of your rural areas, you know, if you go southwest Iowa, they're kind of dying on the vine down there. There's nothing occurring, and so we're seeing more growth, migration to some of these urban areas like Warthoo, Cedar Falls, that some of those rural areas could actually benefit with some plans, long-term. I know you have long-range, long-term plans that you try to put in place, and I think those are all part of, you know, bringing the city, growing it, and TIP plays a role in that. And I just, I don't, the Ways and Means Chair, Representative Sands, I think he's, he's kind of looked at TIP differently. You'd have to ask him for sure, but that's my observation, and we'll, you know, going into that committee, I'm on local government too, and so...
Walt, from your side of the aisle, do you expect much conversation over that?
Well, and I agree with Bob, and, you know, one thing with TIP in a general sense was making sure that we have a balance between, you know, regulating those smaller units and the cities that are doing it right, and making sure that we're not intrusive into how you are doing it right. And so that's therein lies the question. I think, I think we came out this past year, this session, with a good bill that did that. I haven't heard any talk of it, other than Representative Sands, it is one of his issues, and just because I haven't heard him talk about it doesn't mean he won't.
Yeah.
And so I'll let, you know, I'll keep in contact with him and let you know what I know.
Yeah, I mean, for all of you, it's obviously something we're concerned about.
I try to know from our perspective, I think, one is you're only doing it the right way, and the ones that are abusing it continue to be the, keep their score on the right.
I'm just going to add to this. One of the things that we did do, the bill started out over reach, and what came over to the Senate. I know, I know Representative Sands had some personal issues with it, as did Senator Bulcom on our side. And he, because they, you know, they really overstepped the way they did some things down there, and saddled a lot of debt on communities. You know, when you've got bonds that end up paying off in TIP zones that take forty years, you know, like they did in Ankeny with a major apartment store that they put in down there, you know, people are concerned about it. One of the things we did do though was report.
Just to correct, it was named, it was...
I mean, yeah.
Corv, Corv.
Corville, and then in Des Moines, you know, out there where Bass Pearl was located. So, but one of the things that we did do was we instituted that electronic reporting system, so that cities put their data in before it was, you know, in form, so to speak, and piles. And this way, we've been able to compile all that information. Citizens can see what the debt is, where it's at, and as Senator Danison always talks about, you know, people making decisions without facts, now we really are developing evidence-based material to take a look at where the problems are and if there are problems. And so far, I think most cities have been okay with the reporting system, and I think they're saying that it's easier to do than what we had to do before, because you had to do a, you know, really start a report over all the time. I don't know if you guys feel the same way, but...
Takes a little longer to get something started. If we have a project that we'd like to get going right now, it takes a little longer to get it started.
With the reporting system.
The reporting system.
Well, that's kind of stuff that we...
Exactly, the requirement for the plan amendment.
Yes, there's one glitch in there that I think we should...
Very difficult, yeah. If we could, if you didn't have to amend the plan prior to action on a project, that would help, because economic development projects happen quickly, and that amendment process has several waiting periods in it, several patient periods that are making it more difficult.
And I know when you bring a bill like that, people are going like, well, we opened the door, then you got amendments going the wrong direction. But I think something like that, we can get a reach and agreement on, try to work through it. So I'm more than willing to do that. So, but I think that, considering what we're faced with, I'm against full wholesale changes.
Let me ask one more question, and then we'll see if we can get somebody else. We use 657A to death. I think we're the largest city in the state that uses 657A for residential houses. We would like very much for that to be expanded to commercial and industrial properties, if we could use that same legislation. I know that's been presented to you guys. Do you have an opinion on it?
Calibrate us, Bucks, what does that chapter do to you?
Well, it allows us to seize abandoned and dilapidated houses, residential only now, and we use it to death, to the benefit of the city and the citizens. We don't have that same ability if we have a business that's been abandoned and is dilapidated and falling in on itself. We can't use, there's no state program for us to seize.
Is Exhibit A for you to chamberlains?
Well, it could have been. In the past, it could be the old CMC site, it could be the site on Broadway. There, we have several.
Even some commercial buildings as well, right on Fourth Street.
Yeah. We would like very much, and I'm surprised that you, kind of all of you act like you maybe hadn't heard that before. It's a big item for us.
Well, we had heard it briefly, but not in the chapter called...
Okay, we will, we will get you something, and we would like your support on that to try to expand that system so that we have a way to seize and deal with abandoned commercial property, abandoned and dilapidated.
And it has all the due process requirements and protects the property rights of them too. So that's all reasonable stuff. Can I just say about TIP, about this issue of 411, I made it very clear to my caucus, Senate Democrats, that we need to be better partners with local government. It isn't about Des Moines' decisions on high telling you all what to do. You are our partners, and in a lot of cases, our customers. Many of our programs, the revenue streams are linked, and in order for them to work, we have to make adjustments and help you provide those tools to make modern, thoughtful decisions with. And so there's a whole host of issues, many of them which don't cost hardly any money, some of them no money, that we should make changes to, to give you the tools to be successful. You're the economic engines of the state of Iowa, and you can extend it to the counties, to the school districts, to every other intergovernmental relationship. We got to get back to the basics and get you the tools to be successful, especially if they don't cost us a dime. It would be silly to sit on those kinds of requirements and not make some changes. And I think this session, especially with some of the obvious obligations for some of the other things that we have, or financial responsibility, we're going to need to do some of those things that don't cost us a dime. So the mayor mentioned allowing you to, in a responsible way, enter loan transfers. You can already do it for about half of your budget. There's no reason that bill shouldn't go through there with flying colors. There's some other ideas that have come up, and I just think it's time for Des Moines to listen to the local communities and be a better partner.
Thanks, John.
Let me just follow up on that, because that's my precise point too. We have to observe home rule, it's a constitutional amendment, that's the nineteen fifty, that gives the city the authority to control its own affairs. So things like treasury management, okay, should be, that's a city function. We should be held responsible for that. And so sometimes if we just look at the Constitution, it might be our answer. Des Moines sometimes should just be out of the city business.
Yeah. And so that's more of a negative reinforcement way to look at it, but I think we ought to look at positive reinforcement. We need to be better partners, and where those relationships are meaningful and we can improve people's lives at the local community, we ought to do it. It's, to me, the reason we go down there. It's about a partnership. It's not about us just telling the...
And just briefly, that concept of cities being able to borrow their own money, that whole process was one that, I'll be honest with you, I sat in amazement on why that bill never went through, through the process. I mean, it passed overwhelmingly in the Senate. The auditor, David Watt, supported that measure, but for some reason, it just would not come up, and I struggled with that. And I really get a sense this year, in fifteen, that we have an opportunity to do that. And as Jeff said so well, that, you know, create this partnership with cities. I mean, the idea that we're at state capitol, we get this iron fist that we're grabbing on the cities with is ridiculous. It's totally ridiculous.
And I will say for your listeners, we're a little bit in the weeds on some of these things, but that self-funded debt idea would save taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars over multi-year projects, just by changing the state law. It does cost us a thing at the state level. It should be done yesterday.
Anybody?
Mr. Schrader?
Yeah, Mr. Schrader?
I've got, I've got a couple things. You know, the 411 pensions, I'm just curious, you know, I, in the seven years I've been on the council, I've heard former Mayor Hurley, now Mayor Clark, and Mayor Cruz talk about this. But I've established some relationships with some council members in Cedar Rapids and Dubuque specifically. I never hear them talk about this. And it seems to be, they've just accepted it, and they've moved on, and they've kind of plugged it into their budget. So I'm curious, do you hear from the other, because it's just the metropolitan communities are affected by this, is that correct? correct?
Fifty.
There are roughly, yeah, there are roughly fifty cities that participate either on police or fire service in the system, generally your higher population.
So, do you hear this from Des Moines, or Council of Los, or Sioux City?
Yes, you're welcome to come down.
Yeah, I think we have a summit where we all discussed it, I think it's a, it's concerned all the cities that participate.
Been on the business end of that deal for, for a few years now, and it's another one of those examples, where, look, it not only benefits the local taxpayer, because dollar for dollar, it means you don't have to ask for that taxpayer's dollar, but look at what we're doing with one of the highest surpluses in Iowa history, we're parking it at about a quarter percent interest, as soon as you transfer that money over to some of our pension funds, it gains seven plus historically, sometimes twenty plus in any given year, and that's a benefit to Iowa taxpayers, because that money's actually working for us. So, there's a whole host of reasons to raise your hand and say yes to that, other than if you're ideologically opposed to defined benefit plans, or, you know, other reasons, the priorities in the budget, but, but I can't give you a simpler formula in the capital to reduce property taxes than that formula, everything else has a ton of moving parts to it, including the bill we just passed. So, there's an easy answer to some of those issues in that one policy alone.
Well, and, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Jeff said a quarter percent interest, that's what it is, I know the unemployment insurance trust fund, we had a hundred and fifty million dollars in there, and we made one-third of one percent interest in a year on that money. Now, not because the way they have to keep the money available all the time, and they do daily bonds on it and that, so it, you know, it makes a lot more sense putting it somewhere where you can get some work out of it. We've got other funds, the cultural trust fund, same situation, we got six million dollars in there, and we barely get a hundred thousand dollars interest over it, so it's pretty bad.
And then, another question I had, and I think some of you and I have talked about this over the years, but, you know, Councilman Tyber and I, and Councilman Lyndon Jones and Dara have been talking about what Waterloo and Cedar Falls can do in addition to the 2080 stuff that we've been doing for a number of years, what we can do to continue to be more efficient, and I know some of you guys come from Dear, and, you know, you talk about a model of who's doing more with less every year, and they continue to set records and do well, and I think the Dear workers are pretty happy about that too, because they all still got jobs. And, you know, I don't know that any of you were in the legislature when the state, and I don't remember if it was a carrot or stick, but they used to encourage or incentivize school districts to become more efficient, and basically to downsize, I think, I've heard you mention we used to have forty-five-hundred in school districts at one time?
Yeah.
And now we got three hundred and four, three hundred and eighty, so, you know, some of that was just the reality of, as you talk about Southwest Iowa again, but I think, as I remember, some of that was the state somehow, or they're encouraging or incentivizing those school districts to be more efficient, and so I don't know if it's ever a conversation down there, but, you know, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Evansdale, El Crum, we're a perfect opportunity for a, you know, a model to do this, but I know we're not unique, I mean, there's Cedar Rapids, Marion, Iowa, then Des Moines, you've got, you know, a huge opportunity.
Well, yeah, and the big issue too is, you know, if you look at your rural, rural districts, the, the, the concept that we're gonna continue to downsize, and we're kind of at a point where, you know, if we downsize more, kids will be on the bus for a couple hours, and then you've got to deal with transportation costs and, and all those things, so, if, and, I think this is an important piece, if you look nationally with regard to education funding, particularly K-12, we're about one thousand six hundred and, I think it was one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars below the national average on school funding. So, and if you look at K-12 education, you know, they have all the personnel issues, well, there's, there's money costs there, and then you also have the infrastructure pieces, you have the, the busing, you have the school district, so, I think, I think if you talk to a superintendent, I'm sure he'd probably tell you that, you know, they're about as lean as, as you can get in some regards, and, you know, I guess the other option would be to increase class sizes, that's not a good outcome for, for kids in K-12, it's just, it's a fact. So, I do think that there are some efficiency pieces, I know when I was at Dear, I was involved with that concept of lean, I, I think that there are kaizans, that's what they're called, they're a process where they come in and bring groups of people in, and sit down and say, how can we do this with, at a lower cost, and those are effective, and you mentioned Dear, I was involved with that, it really does work. So, I, I, but, I think the reality is Iowa schools are still underfunded when it comes to the per pupil perspective from the state.
Well, not, maybe I didn't complete my question, but my, my question was how, how the state legislature could encourage or incentivize local government to work together like the schools, I'm sorry, I was not talking about.
Yeah, it's a very good, very good question. It's a very good question and a very good point, however, I don't think you want the school plan for consolidation, because what it basically does is reduces the money for declining enrollment, and the schools are forced to consolidate, because you know many of those are very tough community decisions, and they don't usually do it on their own. So, I don't think you want that formula for how cities and counties should be working together, or at least that model. A very good point, though, over the last five years, we've had a state government efficiency bill that was prompted by the recession of '08, '09, and it's the first time in that four or five year stretch that we've had one every year. I've helped manage it, and today chair that committee that does that work, but we've mainly been focused on our own internal operations. Bob is right, we implemented a lean office and made a number of other changes, one good thing of that is the permitting process for the DNR, we reduced the steps in about half, and the timeframe in about half, saving everybody money. Today, the state budget saves about three hundred million dollars because of those cumulative efforts. But we need to start to focus on the local communities and provide what I call friction cause, so that when you work together, and there's a person in all of pension, or, or other things that need to be sorted out, we're encouraging those relationships. One bill that I'll have this year deals with fire and EMS. I think most Iowans would be shocked to know that you have no legal way to set up a regional fire department in Iowa, there are about eight different ways you can set up a fire department, not one of them allows you to spread the cost, that's kind of silly, especially when you consider we have communities in Iowa right now who can't make ambulance calls, because they don't have the personnel or the resources. So, I will have an EMS fire bill where we look at something like that, and my preference is not punishing you for not doing it, that is taking money away, my preference is to allow a vote of people who want those kind of economies and efficiencies of scale, and also encourage you to do it because your levies work and it makes sense, and you don't have to have fifty lawyers and accountants to do a 2080 agreement. 2080 has been good in some sense, but for people to actually work together across more than one or two government agencies, you do need a ton of lawyers and accountants to get it done, and I just think they need to smooth that process out a little bit. So, we'll be working in one area of that, and any other ideas that are out there, the locals will.
Mr. Mayor? John?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I got it, we tried to tap our own chair.
Very good. We should go through here, go out, you can go out and do it that way, just keep turning left.
Or you can, you can stay if you'd like.
Yeah, fine.
You can stay for 5:30 if you'd like.
Pat, you got a question?
Yeah, this is a little bit different than what these big issues that you're talking about, but to me, these are local issues, and one of them is, just passed a resolution, 70, on call upon different body, different governmental bodies to introduce legislation or executive orders or whatever, to help out with the footing drain disconnect issue, and that is one of those bread and butter issues that affect the people here, it's, it's something that's palatable, that you see, that, that people, you know, that are listening to our conversation in the last forty-five minutes, they're going, okay, you know, and, but this is, the, the footing drain disconnect is something that hits home that, that the people are gonna be faced with having to do it, sure would benefit from you guys introducing something both in the House and the Senate that says that you will allow a tax credit on Iowa taxes for anything over the two thousand dollars that the city is already gonna be paying, so I would ask you to do that, and you'll be getting a letter here shortly anyway, but I wanted to bring that up. Another thing is that earlier in this year, we passed, the city council passed a payday lender ordinance, and now we have nine cities in Iowa that have passed that ordinance, and we're still waiting for the House and the Senate to do something. And I would hope that, that you guys, and, and women could put together your heads, and I, I mean, what's the biggie about saying you're gonna cap them at thirty-six percent interest? Other states have done it, it works, and the good that it would do, I think you'd see immediately by lessening, and maybe even the demise of payday lenders in the state of Iowa. Another thing, then I'll quit.
Yes, you're on the roll.
Okay, is, I would hope, this is another bread and butter issue, that you do something about the minimum wage, and raise the minimum wage on the state level this year to more of a living wage, and I know you guys can do it, I know you guys got the abilities to put your heads together and to come up with something for the decency of the working person in the state of Iowa. And finally, please do something about paid sick leave for everybody in the state, state of Iowa, we need to have that kind of language, we need to have it written into state law, not just municipal law, because there, again, is one of those issues that municipal government can pass, they can also do that with minimum wage stuff too.
Well, thanks, Mayor.
You go to Lee at 4:30.
I just got a lead, but I appreciate the footing drains, that's an issue that Cedar Falls is, is gonna be faced with, the payday lenders, I worked on that legislation in the, in the House, and was not able to gather enough votes to get it to the floor for a vote. I know there are folks that are interested in, in establishing a, a limit. The, the minimum wage, I, I don't see anything occurring on that issue this year, and as far as, what was the last one, pay?
Paid sick leave.
Paid sick leave, that would definitely be something to, to look at, and to see what the business community's reaction to that, I don't, I don't know what direction they'll, they'll probably.
They'd be positive, because it's a benefit for everybody, Bob.
Yeah, but, hey, thank you for having me on this, and, you know, what's really great is the collaboration Waterloo, Cedar Falls, I mean, I was at an event the other day at the ADA 267, and the gal that was there speaking to us said that she was in Waterloo, and I said, well, no, no, actually, you're in Cedar Falls, and she says, well, how can you tell the difference? And I said, well, there's a street midway dry, that's basic, and for a lot of people that are, come from out of town.
University is in a lot worse shape than Cedar Falls.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
Thank you. We got a couple of questions here, so.
Well, I'd just like to address a couple of quick things, I, I support a tax credit for unfooted drains, there are a lot of seniors who are in our community that, that've got real issues with that, that they can't, they don't know where it's gonna be budgeted.
You can have it.
Low-income families, there are families that can afford to do it, my mother's in a, had one of those situations when we built Cedar Lou midway dry, they, they all had septic systems out there, and we, and we had, and it was kind of wet, so that they, we had a sump pump, and it went into our septic area, and eventually, when the city sewer came in, they just hooked right in, and there it is, so, you're gonna have to do it, but when you're living on a fixed income, that couple thousand bucks is gonna help, but it's gonna cost more than that, so, I think that's something I'd be doing, you know, I believe in. Minimum wage, you know, I think, you know, campaigning this year, talking to small businesses across the state, they weren't ready for that, they thought it was too big a jump, even though it was gonna get stretched out. I think there'll be an effort in the Iowa Senate to pass something that maybe isn't at the ten-dollar range, but if we give Iowans a dollar raise over a couple of years, anything would be better than sitting there looking at each other in the eye and yelling at each other, not accomplishing something, because if you look at the demand that's out there for, for, on our food banks, and I think there's an article in the paper tonight, or last night's paper, about the demand with federal government reducing the amount of food stamps available, and, you know, the wage thresholds on that stuff, you know, we're sliding, middle class sliding into poverty, and we need to do something about it, and so you can count on me to, to be out there and try to work on a bill like that. Your paid sick leave idea there, Councilman, it's toast, pretty much, so, you're not gonna be able to get that one through, but if you can get two out of three, that'd be pretty damn good, so.
I'm gonna ask you real quick.
Okay, sure. Well?
I assume the guy uses rough words around here, I don't know.
Well, when you're sitting next to Bill, how do you get any?
It's hard to get any.
He meant that in a good way, Bill, I know he.
Yeah, just, just go for it.
Jump in.
Grab the mic.
Certainly, looking at the drainage and the payday loans, the bill has been on the docket, that's something we could look at again, just, I, I don't know how much hope it would have to get through, but there's some, something we can definitely look at. As far as the minimum wage and the, the other issue, again, I think that's, that's gonna be a tough sell, and I think it's, it goes back to an economic philosophy of where, where the money is coming from, where it's going, you know, I, I know business owners and entrepreneurs that tell me if we raise minimum wage to ten, ten, they would have to fire people right what, immediately, so, I mean, it's a, it's a philosophical point of view of how we are governing businesses and telling them how to run the business, so, again, I don't see that happening in this session, so. And real quick, I'll just touch on the, Jeff touched on kind of the local government and the relationship between the, and the state government, and I, and I, I really have seen it firsthand when, when I addressed the self-funded debt bill, because I support that bill, and I do believe it's a local control issue, but I, I ran into this wall, there really is a, I think I've told you about this, Buck, there is a mistrust between some state government and, and local government officials, and I think that stems from, as soon as I was in the legislature, I, I was hammered with the fact that state government budgets are the fastest increasing budgets of any budgets, government-wise, federal, city, I'm sorry, yeah, city, compared to federal, compared to state, city government budgets are growing faster than any of them, and so that's, you know, I think some of the legislators in, in the Iowa delegation feel that the state government is the last line of defense for the, for the taxpayer, and so they feel like that's the place where they can, can be that defense, and, and that then creates a little bit of a rub and a mistrust between some of those organizations, so that's where it's stemming from, you know, and I, I agree with, with my coworkers here that we need to address that, be honest about it, transparent about it, see where it's coming from, and see if we can address it.
Let me, let me hit the mayor if you can.
Sure.
Councilman Amor, he makes a good point, on water issues, and inflow and infiltration of sewer systems and sanitary, we have IFA at the state level who has responsibility for water programs, and oh, by the way, this is a statewide issue.
Yes, it is.
Because of the EPA regulations, and the DNR also stepping in. There's no reason why we can't use the resources of IFA, which, oh, by the way, has billions of dollars bonding authority to help with that infrastructure, we came this close to having a water bill last year because of the freeze issues that went on during the harsh winter of last year. So, there's an opportunity there, again, for the state to be a better partner with the local communities, especially where most of the economic activity is taking place, with people who've dedicated their lives to building a, a career in Iowa, who's, are on fixed incomes now, we have an obligation to them to keep them here in Iowa. So, IFA should be a better partner on these projects, I believe, and we started the conversation around the freeze issues last year, there's no reason we can't talk about this issue with them and try to come up with a pool of statewide resources, doesn't necessarily have to be a tax credit, could be direct reimbursement as well. On payday lending, look, I was a Navy guy, and in many of the military bases around the country, there is a hard and fast rule on how much you can charge military personnel for payday loans, and I think that should be our standard here in Iowa, I think it's thirty-six percent, might be less, so it's good enough for the military, because we know they can be taken advantage of in most communities, and why wouldn't we do it in our local communities back home as well, and cap that interest rate? They're still making money, and they're still able to under that rate even. Minimum wage, let me just say this, I think the minimum wage proposal was too much too soon during the last year or so, you can get the same outcome by putting resources into the earned income tax credit for those same folks that are earning that wage, plus... Plus, you can come back in and provide education, childcare and other healthcare assistance, all the other wraparound things that get those folks back onto a path of independence. And so I'm not a big fan of the $3 jump that was proposed. It scared people, it was a sticker shock for a lot of our small businesses. Why not find a way to get the same policy outcome, which is lifting those folks up through the earned income tax credit, education support, childcare and healthcare as well? There's a way to do it without jumping it up $3. Blend those policies together without all the conflict of a minimum wage debate. And then finally, on paid sick leave, I don't think that has a chance of being even, ability to be drafted, much less being a part of the conversation. Because many of those relationships are employer employee relationships at the local level and, you know, if you can fit it into your benefit package and do it. But I don't think, I think it's a stretch for the state to come in in that kind of detail and provide a benefit like that.
Got time for one more question, Quinn?
Well, I got one comment, one concern. And one, I wanted to reiterate what Mayor Clark talked about, the 657A. If you've ever had a child that has had to walk past one of these monstrous structures and be concerned of whether or not somebody's going to grab them or having to take a look at some of these blighted areas and we can't do anything about it because there hasn't been a good pathway to ownership for the cities to be able to take care of those, then take a look at some of these places too. So if we can do something in regards to commercial structures as well, that would be great. Another concern, and I believe it may have been brought to your attention a while ago, and I know Representative Rogers has an extensive background working with youth issues and in that area as well. But the conversation about some of our youth diversion agencies that we have locally, several years ago, there was a grant written, I think it was at the Annie Casey. And it brought together local government, county and social service agencies to work together to try to deal with some of the youth issues that we had in our community, which is still a challenge for us. And we had agencies that were able to meet the needs culturally and socially of a diverse demographic of young people that we have in the community. And so the concern that I have is some of those agencies have had some bumps in the road. May not have made every, turned in every form correctly or done something right. But the concern is, is there consistency amongst these agencies and some of the agencies that had been in practice a long time ago to make sure if this agency got a slap on the wrist, this agency was completely closed down? And so I can communicate a little bit further about that. But we had agencies that I know for a fact that were helping our young people graduate, that were going to get them, to keep them from fighting in the streets or doing different things because their family nucleus had changed and they didn't have a proper role model at home. So if you can take a look at some of those agencies that you're probably aware of to see if there's, instead of just cutting them off from funding to be able to help young people, put them on a pathway to be successful instead of totally eliminate, eliminating their opportunity to help our young people. And so I can, I can talk to you about that in the future.
That's a good point. We just met with the Cedar Valley Nonprofit Association, which is folks that do that business every day. If those agencies need some help, the administration and other things, there's a ready resource here in Cedar Valley, folks have done it for decades. Maybe refer to them and if there's a tweak that we need to make, you know, at the state level.
And you're talking like programs like Jobs for American graduates and stuff like that too, that work with troubled youth in school to help move them forward? What kind of things are, are you talking more of the level that Jeff talked about?
I think it was the red tape and the other things that they had to go through.
Yeah.
So you've got Cedar Valley Nonprofit Association, those folks have worked well for decades and they may be able to advise some of those smaller agencies on how to help them with their compliance.
Yeah, it'd be nice if, instead of just totally eliminating their funding or their access to state dollars, that they could have someone such as the organization work with them or someone on the state level help put them in a position where they're doing everything that they need to do instead of having one bad apple in that organization and then you're working with 200 kids and you're making a difference in their lives. And then, you know, that's 100, 200 kids that are placed right back in the streets without any alternative. So, and like I said, we've done miraculous things over the last several years to decrease some of those challenges and take some of those rates down. But we just need the support for some of those agencies to be on the right track.
Gentlemen, thank you. We've, we've got another meeting in three minutes. I think these are incredibly good, positive meetings and I appreciate your effort. I know it's an effort to get here. We appreciate you coming, thanks for what you do for the state. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your service and leadership as well.
Thank you.
Much to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, we're adjourned. Thank you.
For December 15th to order, Madam Secretary, if you'd read the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion, second to approve the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We have an agenda, if one of you gentlemen would like to take those items.
Sir, I will take those items. So we have a motion received, Mayor Clark's recommendation for the following, all for the Memorial Hall Commission and all reappointments with an expiration date of 12/31/2017. We have Randy Miller, Mike.
Merzlak.
Merzlak, Craig White and Melvin Whitmer.
We have a motion, a second on those four appointments. Any questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, I assume we're all ready to vote. All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Folks are approved. Motion to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thanks.
Clark, please read the roll.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda is proposed.
Second. A motion to approve the agenda, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that first item and that is a request by the House of Hope for interest in 519 East Third Street for future project.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the request for House of Hope for interest in 519 East Third. Is there a discussion on this item?
Yeah, but I don't know where Noel is.
I don't know where Noel is either.
Chris Wester.
Ah, Mr. Western.
So Chris, can somebody tell us what this means? That's, I think, part of the question is, what is the, what does the interest in that piece of property for future project? What does that mean?
Actually, I think I can comment on this item, I believe. There was interest and it was tabled because the two parties were working together. My understanding last time I talked to Noel was that they wanted additional time, they were still working on stuff. But we had said we'd bring it back on this meeting, so unless somebody corrects me, the last I heard, staff wanted a recommendation to table.
Well, Suzy, I don't, I mean, what is, what is the point of this overall? I mean, what does it mean, request of House of Hope for interest? Does that mean, what does that exactly mean?
Is he not down there, Chris?
Well, I can get him. What they're trying to establish is if the council would entertain the idea of their project wanting in that particular area. And once that's been established, they would start fundraising.
Okay, okay, but do we know, is somebody, House of Hope is here, do we know exactly what, in order for me to vote, one way or another, would be based on whether their plan is still to tear down 519 East Third Street, quite frankly?
Kim Cantrell, I'm board president for Christian Community Development, which oversees House of Hope. And at the last meeting, Noel said that he had wanted to establish some guidelines for House of Hope to write up a proposal and for David Deeds to write up a proposal. But we have never received that information from Noel. We have repeatedly asked for the information.
I hear him.
We never received it.
Oh, Mr. Noel.
And there's Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson.
Welcome to the matrix. House of Hope land, East Third Street, I assume is the topic?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We are, we've received some information from one of the parties. We're continuing to put together a detailed list of everything we think pertains to both parties. I know the two parties have been talking to each other as well for some potential shared uses. I'm not sure how those came out after those meetings. So what we'd like to do is, again, to extend this, to allow us to continue to work with both parties, look at the different options out there to see if we can come up with something that'll work for everybody. If it won't, then the council will at least have a basis for making a decision on that's comparable in both projects.
Alan, do you want to extend it for?
I would say a month. I think if we can get it back quicker, that would be great. But a month would give time for everybody to put everything together.
Noel is, or the House of Hope was up here, would you like to continue?
If you don't mind. Well, Noel Barb has repeatedly asked you for the information and every time that she's asked, you've either said that you are adding to it or it's not quite complete. So we have never gotten the proposal requirements that you want from us.
Okay. We sent out some information, we'll have to check to see that if she didn't get it. We sent out one earlier, one just with a detail, with a bulleted list of what we were looking for. So I'll define that.
I don't think she would have repeatedly kept asking you for the information. She didn't have it.
We didn't find, we didn't put together the finalized information because we are still getting information from the historic data in that area. We received some information from Mr. Deeds that we are trying to incorporate different aspects into the final one.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's okay to go ahead and ask the House of Hope question, continue here. Mr. Chair?
Yes. I'll say yes. Where did Noel go?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just wondering if, if your proposal is going to continue to not include keeping 519 standing? Or if all of your proposals are going to include raising that to the ground, 519 East Third?
For our mission, for our project, we would need to have 519 come down.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And can I ask? Excuse me, go ahead.
And my understanding is that the proposal, Mr. Deeds, if you have any, that you've submitted a proposal dealing with the project that we keep that building standing? Is that correct?
David Deeds, yes, that's insured, that's right. We do that. That neighborhood is very important to continue development of downtown. It's an actual extension of downtown. It has historic housing, which can bring in outside dollars to help rehabilitate it, to make it economically viable, to actually have it rehabilitated. And our goal is, and I am here for JSA Development, that's who we're proposing for, is that we would rehabilitate that house, if the house next door becomes available, we would, we would do it under the same terms as proposed in the draft development agreement that I sent over to you. And that enables us to start to cross Franklin Street, that coupled with the KWWL historic rehabilitation, bringing in outside dollars to rehabilitate our city. It doesn't cost us local property tax levy to rehabilitate the city using historic tax credits. So we view that as a natural extension to continue to support downtown's redevelopment by improving and rehabilitating the housing around downtown.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Further?
So for the House of Hope, your group and the JSA group have still not gotten to the point where we would, we hoped you were going to be by this time when we tabled this four weeks ago, is that kind of correct? I mean, you still.
We have not, we have not gotten the requirements that we needed to put in our proposal. And I know Mr. Deeds is speaking about what he wants to do. I don't feel that we should have to do that again. And I feel that this, at this meeting, we would have had our proposal ready had we had the information that we were supposed to have gotten.
But given the fact that you haven't, and I'm certainly not saying that's your fault by any means, I understand that, but would you be accepting of another four week delay so we can get all this in the light?
I don't think we have any other choice.
Well, we could ask for a vote, I'm not sure how it would turn out. But I mean, I think it would, I think it would be ideal if you would agree to that. I think that would be the ideal situation.
Well, Councilman Smith, you know, my belief is that that property should be rehabilitated. If we have a plan to rehabilitate that property, 519 East Third Street, then I don't know why we would delay a vote if House of Hope is saying that regardless of what plan they submit, it's going to include tearing that building down.
Mr.? Well, my understanding, one of the proposals could allow the House of Hope to use that build. So then, the building would remain standing, the House of Hope would get part of what it wants, as I understand it. But I don't know that yet because we haven't gotten to that point. And that's, I would hope in four weeks, we would be to that point, we'd have all our cards on the table and then we'd be able to decide.
Councilman Smith, I, we did, as I think you're aware, we did make a proposal to the House of Hope to rehabilitate the house and rent it back to, as well as doing the same thing for the next door house, which none of us control. And it's part of our role here. Big picture, again, this is, I view this as part of extension of downtown, but also if you go in that neighborhood, and I realize it is not directly adjacent to their twin home that they currently occupy, I understand that. Nearly 25 to 33, maybe even it's close, in some blocks, 50% of that neighborhood is vacant. There is no shortage of vacant land in that immediate vicinity. And that was our only point, if they were not interested in partnering with us to occupy those rehabilitated houses, then can we find an altered location perhaps that allows them to single site? Again, that's not my call, that's their decision. But we were, we've been attempting to be very flexible throughout this process to find a solution that allows us to continue the historic redevelopment downtown and also allow them to serve their mission. And I, let me just say for the record, I've said it to them as well, what they do is extremely important. I understand that. I live in a challenged neighborhood, I have for 10 years. I understand what's going on in some of these neighborhoods. And I, I want them to continue to do what they're doing. I just, what we're doing is very important to the future of the city as well. And I think that is important. Once a historic structure is gone, it's gone. It will never be back.
Thank you, Mr. Deeds. Ms. Cole, did you have a, Mr. Hart?
I just have one comment. And I, the House of Hope has been treated so badly throughout this process. They're trying to raise money, they're trying to take care of homeless women and children. I can understand if you don't feel very Christian at this point, because it'd be hard. So I encourage us to reach an agreement and don't let them go into the new year not knowing what the future of this project is. They have to raise money to get it done.
And I think.
Mr. Hart?
I think, I think there's, even if we decide as a council or board or commission not to go with either project, the elephant in the room is them not having the opportunity to put together a proposal for the project. She just got up here and said that they didn't get a final draft or whatever the information was, and it's very sketchy. was, and it's very sketchy whether or not they received the first draft with what they need to submit. So I think even prior to we make a decision on what we're going to vote on, there is a fairness issue with them having the ability to submit something to the boards and commission. And so that's why I don't see how we can vote on this. I'm very much in support of the historic restoration, and Mr. Deeds, Lafayette, every other place has been fantastic, but give them an opportunity to put together a draft of something before we just vote to say no, it's a fairness issue.
If I could say, I would, I would agree that let us vote, present our case, our entire case, and let's evaluate it now.
And you, and you said you were agreeable to that also, correct? All right, well then I make a motion to table this for four weeks.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Well, it just appears that, again, the House of Hope seems to, Brink Cantrell, by the way, it appears that the House of Hope seems to be the low person on the totem pole in terms of this process. Mr. Deeds and his kind offer is a lease offer, and quite frankly, is that, as a nonprofit, a good capital fundraising mechanism? Also offering property in other places that are undetermined, is that a wise decision on behalf of the House of Hope? There are a lot of questions that seem to be raised for the House of Hope that seem to be in favor of others, but don't seem to be in favor of the mission of the House of Hope. And I would implore you to remember the mission of the House of Hope, who has long established in that neighborhood, and if that is historical reservation, that is historical reservation.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
So Noel, given the fact that we've got holidays coming up, if we table this till the 12th of January, which is four weeks, are we going to lose a week or two because of the holidays, so we need to go out to the 19th? Because I mean, we really need to get this done, I think.
I, I believe we have the final draft ready to go out tomorrow.
So the 12th is adequate?
So if they believe the 12th is, is enough time.
The 12th worked for you all? Can I make a motion to table this till January?
Mr. Schmidt, that will only give us three meetings though. The 22nd, the 5th, and the 12th.
But we aren't going to be, that's not us, it's what they're getting to Noel, correct?
Correct.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
So is somebody going to second that?
Second.
He already did, so we have a motion in a second to table this till January, what was it, Mr. Schmidt?
12.
January 12th? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That item is tabled.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a request by Lindsay Troyna to purchase a city-owned vacant lot formerly 1135 Magnolia Parkway for $3,000 with a development agreement.
Second.
A motion second for the request, is there any discussion on that item? I had one question on that item, are we following the acquisition policy on this? I was trying to do the math in my head, but can somebody help me with the math on this?
Chris Western, the, the offer price is below the assessed value. The assessed value is, according to county website, is $7,760. However, if you look at Ms. Troyna's attachment, she's planning to make significant improvements to the property. She has an estimate for a new garage for $41,000, and that would probably generate approximately $900 a year in taxes for that garage to own. And Mrs. Troyna is here, if you have any questions for her.
So with that, are you, so with that and the math, does that work? I mean, are you guys suggesting that this move forward, based on that?
I would, yeah, I think staff is suggesting that it move forward, as that lot is only forty foot wide, is not a high-value lot for new development. It is what's considered a lot of record, it does not meet today's minimum standards of 6,000 square feet, nor does it meet the minimum lot width of 50 feet. So as far as new construction, it probably would be difficult to find someone to build on that lot.
Okay, very good. Would you like to speak, or?
No, I just, in case you have any questions.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
No, seeing none? Those in favor of the request by Lindsay Troyna to purchase city-owned vacant lot, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that item passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Services Committee to Order, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll please?
Yes, Mr. Welker?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the agenda, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the request from the Public Works Director for authorization to make appointment to Equipment Operator Two from the current civil service list.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on this request, is there any discussion with that? We're simply filling a vacant spot. We need to talk to Mark. Hearing none, that's a roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes. A motion passes?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion in a second adjourned, and all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign, we are adjourned, thank you.
Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion approved, the agenda is proposed in the minutes of the meeting of December 8th.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Go ahead.
Take the travel request, the first one is for Jimmy James Canales, for Matt Kubo, performance artist, for Vertigo Performance Art Series, for the Waterloo Center for the Arts, 1114-14 through 1117-14, with an amount not to exceed $300.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Madam Chair, lady, I would also like to ask one other quick question, and I haven't seen the article yet, but I heard today there was an article in the Courier about the, the travel request last week for the trip to Paris, and my understanding is that was a, that was an illegal appropriation of funds, or didn't follow the federal guidelines or something like that, I don't know if we know anything about that.
Ken Schenkel, Culture and Arts Director, when we submitted the travel request to the city with the intention of using the CLP funds, we also submitted a request to the National Endowment for the Arts to approve use of those funds for that trip. We got approval back-
This is not on the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, I, I'm sorry, but I'm just checking with the clerks off-
So when, when would we talk about it, if we wouldn't talk about it in finance?
Well, you can talk about it probably, if there's an item on the regular agenda, you can, or at oral comments, you can, but the item that's on the agenda to be discussed has nothing to do with that trip. So I'm not sure that, and I just checked with the clerk, it's, it's, if it's submissive, or admissible, that's fine.
I just assumed that it was a finance committee topic, so that's why I thought it should be brought up here rather than them, so I'm not sure.
It would be best, if we want to have an actual discussion back and forth about it, to actually put it on an agenda. So it would, it would be on next week's agenda, or we could do it Thursday at the agenda, meaning if you wanted it there, to have a back and forth, an actual discussion, which would probably happen on the agenda.
So could I-
I could also have, Kent, send out an email to council with an explanation, if that would suffice, and then if you want more, let me know, and we'll put it on the agenda.
Would I be correct in assuming that Mr. Schmidt can make a statement, but in order to have a conversation, is that the issue?
It needs to be a, yeah, an agenda item, so.
Well, I didn't necessarily want anyone to get into back and forth, I just had a question about that, and then also, so then will the motion be, that we approved last week, up to 4,800, will that be lowered to up to 3,100?
It was an amount not to exceed, so he just won't exceed that amount.
Okay.
Would someone care to take the pre-ops?
Yes, for the pre-ops, we have building maintenance, we have $6,274.76, and that's for the annual contract with J-Tech Inc. for inspection, and chemicals for cooling towers at City Hall and Young Arena. Central garage, we have $2,775 plus $150 shipping and handling, and that's for the clutch, drivering, and pilot replacement for the chipper. Engineering, we have $8,800, and that's for implementation services for the new inspection data for the city's paving management system. Engineering, $4,500 for pavement managing services for Center for Transportation, Research, and Education. Engineering, $7,772, and that's the builder's risk insurance for four stormwater pump stations, and that's at Fletcher, Blackhawk Road, Hollywood, and Cedar Bend. Leisure services, $3,850, and that's the annual subscription renewal to Treekeeper software. And from MIS, we have $2,807.07 Office Pro Plus True Up License. And we have from police, $2,077, and that's a one-year renewal Fortigate firewall software for the police department computer system. From sewer, $2,410.68 plus $300 shipping for the closed-circuit TV camera, crawler, rubber tires, eight each, carbide wheels, eight each, and interhub offset, one each. And finally, from sewer, we have $19,025 for 12-foot or 12-inch pump for the Edwards lift station. I make a motion, we approve all those items.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there a discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. I move that we pay the bills this week, they are $2,536, $2,536,813.21, 2,536,813.21.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. We're going to pay the bills.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Evening ladies and gentlemen and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, December fifteenth. We have a great audience tonight. We have a lot of special stuff going on tonight. So, I'm glad when people come and be a part of our process. And for those of you that might be watching on our public access television, welcome to you also. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welber?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good. If you would all join me, please in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. I don't, oh, Craig Clark is leading us in our pledge. Craig, please.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You all may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I would like to ask that we approve an amended agenda and for all of the residents that we have here for numbers five, five, six and seven.
And eight.
And eight. We would actually like to move those to the end of our resolutions so that we can take care of some of the other business, which we don't anticipate lasting more than about ten minutes or so. And then with the approval of the amended agenda, I also move that we approve the minutes of December eighth.
Second. Counsel, does anyone have any objections of moving those items from the beginning of the resolutions till the end? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Our first item tonight is always a lot of fun. We get to swear in some new firefighters in the city of Waterloo. I need Mike Zimmerly, Kyle Fuller, Kyle Bovee, Levi Hubka and Randy Hansen. If you would all please come up, hopefully you're all here, and please come up. And Chief Treelor and all of your families. If any of your wives or whatever would like to come with, significant others, kids, please come on up. I don't know. Is it not, you can't hear? It is on. So, that's, I was... The building guy will go take a look. Thank you, Steve. The building guy. Building guy, would you take a look?
Or might not.
Guy, why don't you, let's have everybody kind of come up and if, and if the firemen can kind of make a half-moon circle back here. And you need a microphone. Testing. Can you guys hear this one? Is this one on?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Wow, you, we brought a lot of family, Pat.
We did.
All right. But, you know, if we can all kind of gather around so everybody out in the front can see us. And, oh, good, good, good. Just keep on coming, guys. This is a special day. One, two, three, four, there's five. All right, okay. Good to see you, Mike. All right. I'm gonna turn the microphone over to our Fire Chief Pike, Pat Treelor. Pat, if you would introduce these folks, please.
I sure will. Thanks, Mayor. Is Lieutenant Charlie here?
Yeah.
Come on up, Chris. Before I introduce the five new firefighters with Waterloo Fire, I'd like our training officer just to give a quick update on what they've been up to for the last four weeks.
The last four weeks, we've been through quite a bit of training. We've done burn buildings. We had two burned buildings where the guys went in and went in, dug holes and put out the fires. You normally see that. They did search and rescue. They were put through a maze where wires and ropes were hung down and I guess got hung up and had to work as a team. They recalled off a four-story building. They learned how to operate a pump and work some main lines. So, they've been quite busy and done very well.
Good, good.
All right, thanks, Chris. Chris is our new training officer that started about a month ago and then we surprised him with five new hires. So, he's been pretty busy. But I'll introduce the five and then the mayor will swear them in. To my immediate right here is Mike Zimmerly. Mike grew up in Independence and is a graduate of Upper Iowa University and previous coming to Waterloo Fire. He was a school teacher in Independence. He's also on EMTB. And he's here tonight with his wife, Marcy, and their son Dexter. You hear? All right. How you doing, Dexter? Love the hair, buddy. Next beside Mike is Kyle Fuller. Kyle grew up in the Trayer area. He's a graduate from University of Iowa, their paramedic certification program there. He's an Iowa paramedic as well as a nationally registered paramedic. Tonight with Kyle is his girlfriend, Sarah. Where are you at, Sarah? There's Sarah. And his mother Connie, stepdad Mike, father...
Come on, come on, come on.
Father Steve, I know Steve. Sorry, Steve. Sister Caitlin. And last but not least, grandmother Jean.
Hey, Jean.
Hi, Jean. Beside Kyle is Randy Hansen. Randy grew up in Sioux City. He's been in Cedar Valley for approximately sixteen years. He's a graduate of University of Northern Iowa. And he's got with him, his wife Tammy. There's Tammy. And he's got three boys. And I'll try to get it right. Cal, Cole and Cort. Cort, there he is. All right, so welcome to you. Next is Levi Hubka. And I wanted to get it right, close enough?
Yeah.
Levi grew up in Sheffield, Iowa area and is a graduate of the University of Northern Iowa. Comes to us as an EMTB and has some experience with Cedar Falls Fire as well. He's with his fiancee tonight, Stephanie. Stephanie. And mother, Lori.
Should've just asked.
Yeah, no. I had to memorize. And dad, Dan. And he's got a brother, Jordan, here. Okay, Jordan's here and sister Stephanie. So, welcome as well. Last but not least, is Kyle Bovee. Kyle grew up in Gilbertville, still lives in Gilbertville. And he's a plumber by trade, but also comes to us with his EMTB and has fire experience as well coming from Cedar Falls Fire. And he's with his wife Amanda tonight. And their daughter, Addison. So, there you go. It's back to you, Mayor.
All right. My mic is evidently not working, so we're gonna, we're just gonna try this one for now. Congratulations, guys. Your odyssey is just beginning. Welcome to Waterloo. And congratulations to all the family members who have supported these young men and will have to continue to support them. So, I'm gonna read an oath and I'm gonna start by saying aye and then I want, I'm gonna say state your name. I would like each one of you to state your name at that time. So, if you'll raise your right hand, please. This is the oath of office. Aye, state your name. Very good. Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the position of firefighter.
Of the position of firefighter.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Each one of you, I think Chief Treelor's got something for you here. So, hang on just a second. Congratulations to all of you. You already passed the bravery test.
They've been told not to scream.
Last one. Let's give these guys a hand. Thank you. You got me yet? Testing, testing? Can you hear it? Can you guys hear the microphone now or not? Still can't? Okay, if I use this, can you hear? Okay, we're gonna try using the desk mic and maybe Craig back there can continue to work on the lapel mic. Be a little easier for everybody, I think. But in the meantime, we'll do this. There we go. We're ready for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we receive, place on file and approve the consent agenda, items one A through three D. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are two million five hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents, two comma five three six comma eight one three point two one.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Just one simple question.
All right.
Why are we approving travel requests in arrears? Don't we approve them?
Mr. Schenkel, you've explained that, but you wanna give it another shot, please?
Kent Schenkel, Culture and Arts Director. That travel request was originally approved for two hundred and fifty dollars. Due to a weather delay and the two artists leaving town, they were required to spend another evening, which increased that by fifty dollars. So, we're seeking approval for that.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. I would like to note that on the consent agenda, we have four, one, two, three, four, four board members for the Memorial Hall Commission that are being reappointed. And as always, I just wanna make sure that we recognize them and thank them for their good work. That's an important board, as all of our boards are. But Randy Miller, Mike Merzlock, Craig White and Melvin Whitner are being reappointed to another term on our Memorial Hall Commission and we thank them for their service to the city. Okay, public hearings, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Item number two is a motion received and filed, proof of publication and notice of public hearing and that's for the purchase of seven 2015 patrol vehicles.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and that hearing is now, is now open? Does that work now? No? Hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number two? If anyone in the audience would like to speak either for or against our purchasing seven patrol vehicles? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
It's a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bid and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you could do the honors, please.
Yes, the first bid was from Stiber's Ford Lincoln of Milwaukee, Iowa, for a 2015 Ford Interceptor sedan. The bid amount was for twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, two five comma four eight eight point zero zero. For the 2015 Ford Interceptor SUV, the bid amount was for twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, two seven comma three one seven point zero zero. The second bid was from Bill Caldwell Ford of Platoon, Iowa. For the 2015 Ford Interceptor sedan, it was for twenty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, two five comma one seven eight point zero zero. And for the 2015 Ford Interceptor SUV, the bid amount was for twenty-seven thousand fifty dollars, two seven comma zero five zero point zero zero.
Thank you. And pardon my apparent inattention. I'm trying to get the mic to work, my other mic to work. Craig, do we have something going on here?
We're not for sure what's going on, but if you turn it off, they can't hear you over the TV. They are hearing it over the TV, but we're not hearing it in council chambers. So, if you could leave it on, even though we're not hearing it, the people out in TV are hearing it.
Okay, so I need to leave it on for that purpose?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a minute, Mr. Hart. Let me get my wits about me here for just a second. All right, Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the purchase of two 2015 compact pickup trucks for the Building Inspection Department.
Second.
Oh, my gosh, this technology. Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file proof of publication and public hearing for the FY 2015 Geraldine Road Phase Three Contract Number Eight Seven One.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number three, the Geraldine Road Contract?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against that particular project, the Geraldine Road Project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan, specifications, form of contract.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote. Please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you could let us know the bids there, please.
There were several bids. The first bid was from Skyline Construction, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, with a bid bond of five percent. The bid amount was for six hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, six five three comma nine nine one point nine nine. The second bid was from Benton Sand and Gravel, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, with a bid bond of five percent. And the bid amount is for five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents, five one four comma nine five five point six four. The third bid was from JB Holland Construction, Inc. of Decorah, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty, sorry, five hundred and sixty-three thousand twenty-six dollars and five cents, five six three comma zero two six point zero five. The next bid was from Cedar Valley Corp. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for six hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty cents, six one eight comma nine nine six point three zero. The next one was from Horsefield Companies of F Worth, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for seven hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents, seven five three comma one four one point six five. The next bid was from Dave Schmidt Construction Company of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for seven hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents, seven three five comma four two four point nine zero. The next bid was from Baker Concrete and Escavating of Waverly, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for six hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents, six one seven comma seven zero eight point five zero. The next bid was from Kay Cunningham Construction of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for five hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and four dollars and ten cents, five two eight comma nine zero four point one zero. The next bid was from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Rydell Beck, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for five hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and fifteen cents, five six five comma six eight zero point one five. The next bid was from Beef Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the bid amount was for six hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifteen cents, six two nine comma nine one nine point one five. The final bid was from Denver Underground and Grading of Denver, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent. And the total bid amount was for five hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, five five nine comma one four eight point five five.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welber.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of the public hearing. That's for the purchase of two compact pickup trucks for the Building Inspection Department.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number four?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the city buying two compact pickup trucks for the Building Inspection Department? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Second.
I'm sorry, okay. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please. That's also a roll call.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
All right, there was two bids. The first bid is from Community Motors Company of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid amount is for twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, two one comma nine six three point zero zero. The second bid is from Rydell Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid amount was for twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars, two one comma three seven three point zero zero.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if we can interrupt just a minute for, does that one work, Craig?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna switch microphones here just for a minute.
We heard you.
Quickly, yeah.
Everything you said.
This one's ready to go. We'll give it the test. I believe you can hear this one, okay?
Yep.
My apologies to everyone and thank you for bearing with us through that little time of a technical...
The bid bond was for five percent, and the bid amount was for $528,904.10, 528,904.10. The next bid was from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Rydbeck, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent, and the bid amount was for $565,680.15, 565,680.15. The next bid was from Beath Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent, and the bid amount was for $629,919.15, 629,919.15. The final bid was from Denver Underground and Grading of Denver, Iowa. The bid bond was for five percent, and the total bid amount was for $559,148.55, 559,148.55. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Item four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of the public hearing. That's for the purchase of two compact pickup trucks for the building inspection department.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number four?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the city buying two compact pickup trucks for the building inspection department? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Second.
I'm sorry, okay. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
All right, there was two bids. The first bid is from Community Motors Company of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid amount is for $21,963, 21,963.00. The second bid is from Rydell Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid amount was for $21,373, 21,373.00.
Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, if we can interrupt just a minute for, does that one work, Greg?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna switch microphones here just for a minute.
We heard you.
Quickly, yeah.
Everything you said.
We'll give it the test. I believe you can hear this one, okay?
Yep.
My apologies to everyone, and thank you for bearing with us through that little time of a technical challenge. We are in resolution, I'm sorry, yes, we are in resolutions, and we have moved to move five, six, seven, and eight to the end of the resolution part, so we'll start with item nine, and let's do nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey, I heard you first.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the award of demolition and site clearance contract to Lehman Trucking for the demolition of 929 West Mullen Avenue, 100 Blackwood Avenue, 3175 Independence Avenue, 2375 Independence Avenue, and 4012 Levercy Road in the amount of $136,975. And number 10, a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Waterloo and Flowers Baking Company of Waterloo, LLC, for the acquisition of 325 Commercial Street in the amount of $400,000, with up to $15,000 in city environmental and closing costs, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number 11, a resolution approving the request by roof development for the eight lot preliminary plat of St. Joseph's Square, Zone C3 Central Business District located at the northwest corner of East Third Street and Lafayette Street. And number 12, a resolution approving completion of project recommendation of acceptance of work and release of retainage in the amount of $4,018 for work performed by Hawkeye Alarm and Signal Company of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of $80,360 for the Waterloo Public Library Security Camera Project.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I had a question on number 10, about the intended use for that building or that site.
Okay, at this time, we do not have an intended use for a site. We've talked about a lot of things there, as you know. We feel it's important that we control that site, and it's, it's long been a topic of conversation that we need to control that with all the development along the river, the riverfront enozans, and everything that's going on downtown. Our intent at this point is to purchase it and have control of that building. We do not, at this time, have an intended use of it.
Okay, is part of controlling that site, securing it to make sure nothing happens to it in case we are able to save that building?
Of course.
Okay. I just had some questions.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm sorry?
I had questions from a caller on that.
And it's a good question, and I've had that question also.
Can I ask where the money is gonna come from to pay for that?
We have bond acquisition money that we put in the CIP every year for downtown acquisitions. This is part of that downtown acquisition bond money.
Do we know what the property, property tax tab on that building is that will stop when we buy it?
I, I don't know if either Michelle or Noel, either one can answer that. The building is, is assessed at $424,000 and change. I don't know what, that, I don't know how that equates to a tax.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
The property taxes are $17,000 plus on that building.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn?
That must include the county and the school share.
Okay, let's, let's talk into the microphone if we get, I'm sure people are interested in that. Noel, why don't you answer it, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, yeah, I know it was worth about $442,000, which would equate to about $17,750 in taxes to all taxing entities on there, not just the city portion.
Okay. Could I answer your question?
No.
And, just one more, sorry. And so if we don't buy this now, what do we think happens? I mean, are there other people lining up to buy this? Are we competing with anybody, or, I mean, how did this come to be at this point in time?
Flower Foods has designated this as being available for sale at this point. They chose to work with us first before putting it out for public sale, because we had expressed interest in that. Our original interest in the site was, number one, the operation of the bakery there, getting the trucks, and if you ever saw the trucks getting into their dock, it was about an 18-point turnaround. So we knew there were some difficulties with the site being utilized as a warehouse or as a baking facility. So we had conveyed the message to them that we wanted them to very much keep a bakery here in the future if they, if they chose to do so for location purposes, that we would help them acquire this property and help them buy the new site if they put a bakery back here. At this point, they've chosen to move ahead with the sale of the property, and again, chose to work with us before offering it up for a public sale like they have with many of their properties. I believe all of the other three Wonder Bread sites in Waterloo have sold to private developers. Due to the location of this within the downtown redevelopment area as determined by the downtown master plan, we did feel it was important for the city to control the site.
Noel, I was wondering, that $15,000 in city environmental and closing costs, is that tied into asbestos abatement, or what exactly is the environmental, what does that refer to?
We will primarily be testing for asbestos and also underground contaminants, doing a phase one and a phase two if necessary on the site. We put it at 15,000, we think that's a safe number, and for the closing costs for abstracts and things like that, so we don't have to come back to council with a number number. Hopefully, it'll be a lot less than that, but we will be checking to make sure that it's safe for the city to buy that based on phase one, and again, potential phase two environmental.
Is that because it's being thought that that building's gonna be razed and you need to find that, or would you do that on any site that's acquired by the city?
We actually perform phase ones on all sites acquired by the city. It protects us under state laws in case there is environmental foundation.
Regardless of whether it's gonna be razed or not?
Correct.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Noel. Mr. Mayor, I know there are people here that would like to talk to this, number 10, would they be allowed to step to the mic and say something?
They, they can, I, I think, I'll try to answer their questions before they come up, but yes, if there's someone in the audience, as always, I'll let them speak to this issue. There is no plans at this time to demolish that building. That's part of the question is, is there any plans for it? There's no plans for it, nor is there any plans to demolish it. And I know that's a concern, but if anybody would like to speak to counsel, step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Jeff Kurtz, 212 East Fourth Street, you're representing Main Street Waterloo. So, as you're all aware, Main Street combines historic preservation and economic development in the name of downtown revitalization. That's historic preservation. So as a representative of that organization, I, I would like to just thank the City of Waterloo for taking such an interest in this site. It's very important within the context of our downtown. And so if you do in fact approve this sale tonight, I think it's really important that we as a community have a very thoughtful discussion about that building's future, and I, I've heard you say before, Mr. Mayor, about no stated intention on that yet, so discussion will be important. I know that there's a lot of interest about that, and many of you have heard about that already today. So, you know, we as in Main Street and many of the downtown supporters, we are paying attention, we are interested, and we're prepared to assist with the building's future.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question if no one else. I received actually a few calls about this particular item on the agenda, and I guess we've done amazing work to our downtown area, and that's going to continue, but one of the questions was in regards to how much money we're spending per building for acquisition, is there a sunset date for these types of expenditures for our downtown area within our planning?
Oh, Noel, I don't know if you want to answer that. I'll, I'll try to answer it, Mr. Hart, as long as there are empty, unused buildings and/or blighted buildings and/or buildings that just don't fit in the downtown plan, I would say that we're going to continue to issue bonds to, to buy those so that we have control over those buildings. I, I want everybody to understand that if the city doesn't buy this, and we absolutely think that we should, in order to control it and to have our, our arms around its destiny, that location and that building, then somebody else could come in and build it and tear it down and turn it into anything that they wanted to. We, we feel it's very important. I don't know, many of you will remember the Sherman Project, when we were looking at downtown housing, waterfront housing. One of the issues with that project, it wasn't what stalled the project, but one of the issues was parking. Where were we gonna park people to live in that downtown housing area? That downtown housing is still a goal, and we will still need someplace to park people for that project should it move forward. And there again, that, that, even that doesn't necessitate the demolition of the building. So, I want to make that clear. So, I, I don't think that there's an immediate sunset on that plan to bond for buildings that we need to acquire in our downtown.
And, Mr. Mayor, to that, to that point, and the conversation I had today, one of them was a very hard pill for me to swallow, and that is that the $400,000 that was through our monies to get this, I believe it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great use, but to make sure that there's also some consistency in other areas to make sure we get some of those buildings that have been left to be in some of those same situations. So, that was a tough one for me to take, but just wanted to make sure that that's relayed to council and to staff as well.
And just to answer that, so that I do not leave that thought linger, Councilman Hart, it wasn't too long ago that we bought several pieces of property around different industrial sites to get, I think all of those are houses, that we bought them to get them out so that we could make way for development in those, those sites, so we are very much in tune to that.
Mr. Mayor?
And Mr. Welper?
Just, just comment, should a private individual buy it, because we do not have 657A in regards to industrial buildings, someone could purchase it and it could sit empty for another 20 years.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And, and, well, and, 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 but yes, that is correct. Further questions? There's a motion and a second on all four items. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
but I think folks kind of want to see something done now.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Are there any or have any policies been drafted around the use of these cameras? Will the officers be able to turn them on and off at their option? Um how does that, how does it work with these?
Yeah.
Good question.
Hopefully it won't be the same company that get the cameras from. We have policies right now for uh the uh video systems in the squad cars. We will just have to modify them a little bit, because the one thing we have a concern about, some residents may not want to be recorded, or we may not to record, may not want to record some victims or witnesses because of the protections they have. So we will have to draft the policy, but we do not have one now. We'll build on one we currently have.
Dan, what about the availability of these recordings for for viewing? What what's the current policy around that?
We will follow the current open records policies. Generally, if it's an open act of investigation, the information can't be shared, but ultimately practically everything can be shared.
Okay, so if an officer is wearing one of these cameras, do they have the option to turn it on and off? Because like the the camera in the patrol car is only activated when what the lights are on?
When the lights are on, the officers can activate it manually, and generally with any contact, they're supposed to turn the camera on. However, there are exemptions. And as with any piece of equipment, there are malfunctions, and we struggle with malfunctions with this with these equipment.
Okay.
Further questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welk?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Those motions carry. 16, 17, and 18, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
16, I move to adopt a resolution approving memorandum of understanding with Interco for grant writing services in the amount of $3,000 for a re-grant application request of $200,000 for improvement to the Sherwood Park Recreation Area. 17, I move to adopt a resolution approving agreement with AECOM of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $17,900 for engineering services related to the design of upgrades to emergency generator rehabilitation, FBO building, windows, and masonry ceiling, and replacement of exterior doors and terminal bag makeup area for Waterloo Regional Airport. In 18, I move to adopt a resolution approving the agreement with AECOM Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $16,300 for engineering services related to the preparation of documentation for K-Tex for tree removal at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second. Council, do you have any questions regarding 16, 17, or 18? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welk?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, those motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to do 5, 6, 7, and 8, all in one reading. They are all kind of tied at the hip. Uh I I wouldn't think that we'd be interested in passing one and not the other. So we're going to offer them all for a vote, and after we hopefully do that and get a second, I'll explain a couple of parameters, but let's take 5, 6, 7, and 8, please. Ms. Cole?
5 is a resolution approving the variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 11-3-2 per N.C. per preliminary plat approval. Section 11-3-3 per N.Z. Application procedure and requirements, and a waiver to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 11-4-4 per N.A. Differral or waiver of required improvements as it relates to the approval of the preliminary and final plat of Nottingham Third Edition. 6, also a resolution approving the request by Robinhood Enterprises LLC for the 11-lot preliminary preliminary plat of Nottingham Third Edition, zoned R1, 1 and 2 family residence district, located north of West Shawless Road and west of West Forest Street. 7 is a resolution approving the request by Robinhood Enterprises LLC for the 11-lot final plat of Nottingham Third Edition, zoned R1, 1 and 2 family residence district, located north of West Shawless Road and west of West Forest Street. And 8 is a resolution approving the request by Robinhood Enterprises LLC to rename the existing Crusade Drive to Shelley Court.
Second. Very good. There's a motion and a second on items 5, 6, 7, and 8. Ladies and gentlemen, this not hearings, but we're certainly going to allow audience participation tonight in this. I know it's been a very emotionally charged item that's been in front of planning and zoning. And Council, by the way, just for your information, I'm sure you know, this comes to us with a recommendation of denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a recommendation of approval from our planning department. Ladies and gentlemen, those of you that would like to speak, we have rules of conduct for the uh council, for speakers. We have eight people that have called in and requested time to speak. All of those eight people will be allowed five minutes, and we will have a timer on, and anyone who is not on the list of people that would like to speak, which can have three minutes to to speak either for or against the project. So I don't have a uh, we have George Stickler, George Stigler, Mike Young, Bill Claussen, Rick Young, Kevin Courtright, Phyllis DuLaveras, I hope I pronounced that right, Gary Luteric, and Wendell Lupkes are all on our list of people to speak. I don't know, I I think I have an idea of where some of those fall, but I don't know, and I don't want to to pick who goes first or not. Uh any of you are are welcome to come to the microphone, and you have five minutes to speak either for or against. Mr. Young?
Good evening. Uh can you hear me? Okay, my name is Mike Young. I live at 215 Pauline Place in Waterloo, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, Robinhood Enterprises. This planning request that you have before you tonight has faced the most bizarre objections and accusations that I've ever seen. Uh it's not, though, because this is a unique request. It isn't. Um this request and this development has been on the books for over 10 years. The area is zoned for this use that we have before you tonight. And most importantly, this request that you have before you meets all the requirements that this city has for plats. It's been, though, subjected to some wild and outlandish accusations from the neighbors that have just, it it's been basically a shotgun kind of throw the spaghetti against the wall and see what sticks type objections to it. A little bit of background, this area was developed by Norm Hayek in 2004, and at that time he had the property zoned, including this property, zoned residential. Um he started developing the subdivisions there in Nottingham. Then he lost the property to the bank, and then my clients bought it from the bank a few years ago, sold the the remaining lots that were in there and then are now before you tonight with the fifth and final request for a plat. But since the request came up a few months ago in planning and zoning, we've had some awfully inflammatory, I would say some ill-conceived and often contradictory objections by a few of the neighbors who are opposed to it, who live behind this property, who will lose their view of the green space and will have neighbors behind them. We've heard things like the retention area, which is required by city, state, and federal regulations, is going to harm or potentially kill children, it'll become a dump, it'll create noxious diseases. All of this despite the fact that detention area is not designed to hold water. It'll be 18 inches deep at its deepest point, and it'll only be there for overflow water. It won't be a pond. Still, there are four ponds within four blocks of this neighborhood that had pre-existed the homes that were built here in Nottingham. We've never heard any objections about those to these allegations. And this is detention area. It's very similar to the detention area that this city council and Planning and Zoning Commission recently approved unanimously at Audubon Heights Fourth Edition, which is just a couple blocks away. It was proved unanimously preliminary and final by the city council. We've also been told that there'll be biblical flooding at Prescott's Creek that will only affect this side of the creek, but not the other side of the creek by Faustoria Drive and Southland Park, which is actually lower elevation. You'll see that tonight. Finally, they've invoked God on their side and made some awfully vitriolic comments about us and reminded us that his word is opposed to this plotting request. We can't change the fact that some of them will lose their view of green space, green space that they don't own. Uh it's become kind of the classic I got mine argument, that I got mine in the subdivision. I don't want anybody else to get theirs. It's been crazy, um the amount of accusations that has been made, but it doesn't take away from the fact that this is a plotting request. This is not, it's Title 11 of your Code of Ordinances. This is not a zoning request. This is not something subjective like zoning or a special use permit or a variance. Zoning's already been done here. It was done 10 years ago, and at that time it passed the city council unanimously. What you have before you tonight is a very technical review requirement for plats from Title 11. It's been looked over six ways from Sunday by city engineering staff, city planning staff, by our engineers. And by all accounts, it meets the requirements of the plotting ordinance, the plotting ordinance. And since we've gone through, we've been asking if there is an objection, as we've gone through planning and zoning, asking for those objections so we can look at that and address it. We've never gotten any. No specific objections to this request. Naysayers have threatened litigation here um over the last few months in planning and zoning. What I would do is is flip that around. The concern here is that if you've got a request before you that meets all of the requirements for the subdivision ordinance, Title 11 that you have in your books, that's what we're asking you to follow. Please uh consider the rules. The rules here are very clear. This request meets all of those rules and those requirements. It's the same thing like I mentioned before that happened with the Audubon Heights Fourth Edition. And that, again, it was proved unanimously by this council, and it's a very similar project with a detention area. That was approved without objection. Um it's just like I said, a few blocks from this. So we're asking you to follow the same rules that you set for Audubon Heights Fourth, and that you have in your books right now, and approve this request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I would like whoever would like to come to the microphone next. Mr. Claussen, give us your name and address, please. Alrighty.
My name's Bill Claussen. I'm a Claussen Engineering Survey in Waterloo, 2705 University Avenue, for engineering. We've tried to make this about as big as we can. Hopefully you'll be able to see it. Do you have something to add? We'll start with this one. This is a hallway. Look, we've got a cross section of the, from the proposed Nottingham period vision, across Prescott Street, which is right there, over to the Southland Park, okay? And the green line here, that's the existing ground. Up here, there's a red line. That shows what we're proposing for the new street rates for Shelley Court. Down in this area, this is showing the storm sewer that will collect on Shelley Court and go down through the detention area right here, and then off to Prescott Street. So it's a very large storm sewer right here, then on the upstream edge of the detention area, which is right here, it changes to a smaller pipe, so under normal flow conditions, your your most frequent rainfall events, the water just goes right through to Prescott Street. It doesn't pond at all. If you have a bigger rainfall event, the water will will surcharge this line and be caused to go up out of this structure right here and be potted in this, into the detention area. The detention area has, well, it is, well, the bottom elevation of the brick is 865. The pipe elevation that we're coming into the brick is around 867, so it's two feet off the bottom. Uh that gives us, the low elevation in the pond is at elevation 869 and a half. So we roughly have three feet in the bottom of this thing that we're going to put sub drains tile underneath it so that water doesn't accumulate in this pond. There'll also be a structure in the bottom of this pond so that the overflow water that can come back into this pipe when the rainfall event subsides and go back out to the creek. So the area will be, normally will be dry. They'll have underground tile underneath it to take the water out, just like farmer's field does. Should be able to be grass and grass crop as prohibited, as has been in the last few years. It's good to note that, I've got too many switches on this thing. The, that's still on one. So over this area is uh, it's grass, it's an overflow path to the water from Prescott Street to go around Southland Park. I believe Wendell Lupkes, who has horses over here, props, rents this from the city, and props hang off of it for his horses. The elevation of our pond is actually higher than this ground by about two and a half feet. So and this this area does not have tile, because I don't believe it does. So our detention pond should actually drain better than this area does right now. We sized the detention area to take all the water that comes to it from the Nottingham Editions. Uh we did this after confering with the city um on uh outlet requirements. Uh we have a ponding area that, let me put it on top here. So the green here is actually the wet surface. The low elevation, where it will overflow, is right here. That's elevation 871. The ponding, the pond, the low spot will be in the middle of the pond. That's where we get our six and a half, around 80 inches. So it was sized, the the volume required for detention is around 43,000 cubic feet. We're providing around 49,000 cubic feet. So we haven't overly sized it to make it um anything but a very shallow depression. Uh we are making, we are grading this area up to the uh lot lines. It'll be about a 10 to 1 slope. I think the the Stevis will be an 8 to 1 slope. Near the creek here, we have, this is a 10 to 1 slope. And to give you an idea what that is, most of your driveways in the approach section from, excuse me, from the back of curb or the gutter to the sidewalk, that's about a 10% slope. So it's a very slight slope. Be available for any questions, John.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening. My name is Rick Young, one of the developers of of the project. As Mike Young said, we're here for the subdivision rules, not for the zoning rules. So it's much less emotional. It's been zoned for 10 years. I think the first neighbors moved in in 2004, right about when it was rezoned. So they've all lived there. They know this, they knew this was going to happen. In neither in the subdivision rules or in the in the plotting rules is there a provision about neighbors losing their view that would would throw a project out. And really, that's about all that they really have to argue about on this project, is is some of them are going to lose their view. We understand that. Originally, uh with the new FEMA map that you passed two years ago, uh the the map was incorrect at this point. We submitted that to FEMA after surveying it. FEMA submitted a Loma, a letter of map amendment two months ago, taking the whole subdivision out of the flooding, uh out of the flood plain. It's what's not considered floodable land. Uh there is one agency that I know of in the United States that determines what's in flood and what's not in flood, and that's FEMA, and they have removed this. Uh the detention area gets a lot of, if you've read the neighbors item there, is it's the biggest dark spot, I guess, that they want to want to throw at it. That is required by the federal government, it's required by the state of Iowa, it's required by the city of Waterloo, and it's required on the Waterloo plan and zone. We didn't put it in there for the fun of it. We put it in there to meet the requirements that that you insist on. Bill said it's sized for basically all five of the Nottingham subdivisions, this being the fifth. So we made it bigger. So downstream, there are, there will be more flooding protection with this project in than there is now, because the other four subdivisions did not require it at that time. This will be owned and managed by a homeowners association, just similar to what you approved six weeks ago with the uh Skogman Homes, about six blocks away from this. Homeowners Association, every lot there will own it. This one has very much advantage. They'll they'll have not only the crop ground here, but they're making about $2,000 a year on this area. They've also got the wooded area there, and and it makes a good buffer. They will all have access to it, uses of it. They can be down there hiking, taking the dog, whatever they want to do. So it's it's a little different homeowners association. We think it's a real advantage for them, and we think they're going to like that. Uh Cedar Falls has been doing this for their subdivisions for the last four or five years. Homeowners Association owning the detention area there. Uh it's not a borrow pit. They're, in their argument today, they want to call it a borrow pit. There's no borrow pits on the plans, on the perimeter plans or the uh final plat. It has to do with the stormwater detention area. Surface water runoff, what you got today, there is a picture of of what they call flooding. That's not the case. That's surface water. Definition of flooding is the increase in the bottom up of a water area or a bed. They have on those pictures, they show this line here, and they state that the flooding, they've all seen flooding here, that this this elevation is 886. If you look on this loan, it's kind of hard to see. The FEMA figures, the, refigured, the 500-year flood is 875, and that's from across section lot number eight right here, going across the creek. Bill's showing you this at the bottom of the creek. 886, which is this Magin line. Now if you look over here first, you see a subdivision, Southland Park subdivision. Been there 30, 35 years from there, very nice houses. If you check with the 500-year flood and 100-year flood, you see it comes up almost as bank there. This house here, it took elevations of it. This is the house in perspective there. The garage, the first floor, and the for, and the uh, the roof. By their reckoning, and they've been very staunch on this, that this is what they've seen, I think, three times since 2006. That house has been in water up to its roof, insulation in its roof. Now, I know for a fact, you know for the fact, city city staff knows for a fact, that subdivision hasn't flooded three times in the last six years to the roof high level. But they insist, that's what you got today. This is the flooding elevation. Water seeks its own level. This would be 20 feet deep.
Thanks, Rick.
If you want that.
Okay, be available for questions, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Got Mr. Courtright?
I'd like to go last.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to have the opposition.
Okay. Mr. Stigler?
I'm George Stigler, and I live at 4616 Newton Drive. I guess if you planted it correctly, you could develop Love Canal, that poison pit in New York from a few years back, at least I see the argument that has been made to you here tonight. This thing is not a detention pond, nor is it a detention pond. This is simply a borrow pit. They're going to go in, and they're going to take soil from that area, and they're going to use it to shape these lots and then build these roads. This thing is going to be 40 times larger than is required. It serves no purpose except to supply dirt for this subdivision. If you take a look at the detention ponds at Hop Road and Shawless or at Sunnyside South, you'll see what a detention pit or detention pit really looks like. This is a borrow pit. And if you would like to see it, I've got some photos here of the pit out on Shawless Road. You'll see that it is at max 45 feet to 50 feet long by about 20 feet wide. And it borrows, it bothers me that every time we hear from these people on the size of this and the depth of this, it changes. If you go back and review the records, it started out, it was going to be 5 to 7 feet deep. Then it was going to be 3 to 5 feet deep. Then it was going to be 3 feet deep, and now it's going to be 18 inches deep. I wish they would make their minds up. This thing is going to be nothing but one huge stagnant pond. If you look at the map of this, this thing is a quarter mile long, it's 130 feet wide, and despite what you have been told here tonight, it is going to be 3 to 5 feet deep. Look at the kids who live in that neighborhood. Kids are naturally attracted to water, and they're going to play in this water. And in this water, you're going to have loris span, you're going to have Roundup, you're going to have chemicals of every nature that people use to treat their yards. This is going to be nothing but one big area, stagnant area that is a breeding ground for mosquitoes, West Nile virus, encephalitis, and things of that nature. It's going to be an attractive nuisance to kids. It's going to be the possible cause of some kid drowning or almost as bad, some kid falling in and swallowing a mouthful of this toxic fluid and then suffering brain damage and lifelong debilitating illnesses simply because of this thing being the size that it is. It's going to affect the property values of the people who live in that neighborhood. We put our life savings into our home, as did a lot of other people. We put our life savings into our home, as did a lot of other people who live out there. They're going to say that the eleven people who live in this area will maintain that lot, that, that big pool. Why would they? What's in it for them? They're not going to do anything. The homeowners association here speaks in terms of maintenance. They offered it to the city of Waterloo in August. The city of Waterloo wisely chose to turn it down. Now they're going to impose that liability on the homeowners association. No homeowner is going to assess anything to himself or herself to maintain something that is dangerous, and that will serve no purpose to them. This is a potential liability to those owners of the eleven lots. It's a liability to all of us who live in that neighborhood, and worse yet, it's a liability to the entire city of Waterloo. This thing is going to breed disease, health, it's going to be overrun with mosquitoes, rats, mice, snakes, and what have you. There are going to be countless health issues that are raised with this. And despite what you've been told about this not having water problems, we've lived there since April of two thousand and eight, and there have been three separate occasions when water rose, not as a result of ice backing up onto properties, but out of Prescott Creek to some three hundred to four hundred and fifty feet or so. You can engineer anything you want, but I trust my eyes, and I am telling you point blank, since two thousand and eight, there have been three separate occasions when water will flow onto these lots that will back onto Prescott Creek, and these people are going to have their life savings destroyed by having their basements and their properties destroyed. This thing is going to be just one massive headache to the city of Waterloo and one potential untold liability to the eleven people who buy that. I'm asking you to do what you should do. This has been considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, not the staff, but the commission, on four separate occasions over the last four or five months. And on each occasion that they voted, they voted in October, three to one, to deny this. They voted earlier this month, four to two, to deny this, and we're asking you to deny it as well. Thank you.
Judge Stigler, thank you very much. Phyllis Duleveras, again, I hope I'm saying that right, Gary Lutereck, and Wendell Lupkus.
Actually, you're pronouncing it perfectly.
I'm sorry?
You're pronouncing it perfectly.
Really?
Yeah. Wow. My name's Phyllis Duleveras. I live at four five five eight William Drive in Waterloo, Iowa. And I, we bought our house on William Drive just shy of a year and a half ago, and I'm telling you, had we known at the time that we would have a quarter mile long pit in the ground behind our house, I would have never, ever bought a home there. Having another house behind you is very reasonable, especially when you live in an urban area. Common sense would dictate that you would never, in your wildest dreams, imagine that anybody would ever have something like that in their backyard. You know, I'm, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a plumber, I'm, I'm simply, I'm a nurse, and I'm a mom. And I'm also a former resident of a very large housing development that was built on property that was dependent on a pit like this to drain it. That was in two thousand and five when that pit failed. And that pit failed, and we didn't even know it. The way that we found out about it was because our homeowners association, which charged us, my assessment was two hundred and some dollars a month that you pay based on your property size, tested it on a routine basis, and they found that it was growing something called cyanobacteria, which is actually toxic to humans and pets. It was traced to a failure of the pond, pit, whatever you want to call its infrastructure, that it allowed the bacteria to grow. The bottom line was, it had to be repaired. It had to be, you know, taken down, the tiling replaced, plumbing replaced, pipes replaced, and the cost was a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, which was covered by a special assessment to all of the homeowners, including myself, that lived there. But the big difference was, this was a pit that drained a property that held two thousand and four hundred homes. So we got to split that hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars two thousand and four hundred ways, not eleven. The neighborhood is very different than what they're proposing to you. The former neighborhood had strong covenants, it had a third-party management system, it set fees, it collected monthly fees, and it took care of landscaping, mowing, pesticides, water testing, and everything else. I'm very, very concerned about the safety of having this pit in my backyard. In the immediate surrounding area, I have counted at least fifty-eight children under the age of fifteen on both sides of the pit that could potentially come into that area. The eleven proposed homes are going to add probably another twenty or so kids into that mix. Accidentally swallowing any water from something like this is dangerous. You can simply touch your mouth after coming into contact with that and result in the transmission of parasites, things like E. coli, which can cause neurological problems, runoff from, from pets, if people are going to be walking their animals back there, if there's farm animals nearby, runoff from that can cause fecal bacteria to come into contact with that area. And, you know, and I can tell you, I, I grew up on a farm. I grew up on a beef cattle farm where we made three hundred and thirty-seven acres of hay three times a year. And I can tell you right now, a quarter mile long, hundred and thirty foot wide, eighteen to twenty-five to god knows how deep pit, nobody's making any hay on that. You can't mow something like that. That's not, that's not a hay field. Please, please, that's not, you're not going to make any hay there. But, yeah, there's a serious risk of danger associated with these ponds or these pits. You know, kids are the greatest concern, but they're also a danger to adults, they're a danger to pets, and they're a liability to the people that become responsible for accidents and as well as the maintenance and upkeep. And without a strong written plan of responsibility and accountability for who's going to maintain it, who's going to mow it, it's, I would urge you to please, please not approve something like this until you have a far better and more concrete idea of what the future state of our city looks like. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Can I pass these out?
Sure.
Time to start?
Good evening. My name is Wendell Lupkus. I live at forty-eight sixty-two West Fourth Street. That's the acreage just south of the property here. And I'm a land surveyor by trade, so I'm pretty familiar with these types of situations. The developer would have you believe that this is, this is the common practice, this, this pond is, is the common practice. However, it's not simply because it's in a floodway. The floodway is the federally protected area that carries the majority of the floodwater. And as such, there's, there's special safeguards on that. But let's start with perspective. What we've got here is we've got eleven lots that are required to have a certain amount of stormwater detention, which is the current regulation. They've upsided their mind to take care of the other ones, the other additions, but they, they are still putting the burden on these eleven people. I'm probably the least affected of anybody in the neighborhood by this, but the reason I'm here is basically caveat emptor, let the buyer beware. What, what these eleven people are not going to understand is that this flood detention area, because it's in the floodway, is going to be inundated and subjected to the effects of Prescott Creek, not only when it overtops, but even as Bill mentioned, at about three feet of water in there, that's when it's going to start to get into the elevation of the detention pond. It'll start backing up. So when it, at the time Prescott Creek leaves its banks, that detention area is going to be pretty full, depending upon how fast it rises and stuff. We're not going to get down on all that. But to give you a little perspective, the area that's contained within this plat is ten point eight acres. The drainage area of Prescott Creek at the Shawless Bridge is ten point four square miles. So with six hundred and forty acres in a square mile, that means that these eleven people are going to be asked to maintain forever within the floodway of a, of a drainage basin, six hundred and sixteen times what their own basin is. I guess that's why I'm here, is I don't think there's any way to make those people aware of that, and I just, I don't think it's equitable. Anyway, if you want to look at the, I've added where the detention basin is in the red and green there on the, that's actually the official flood insurance profile. And you'll see that the detention area that's, that's calculated is, is from the basin up to that red dotted line. Everything above that is actually borrow that's going to be used for the roadway. So is it a borrow pit? Well, kind of, but it, it's a borrow pit created to make a detention pond at the bottom, is what it is. And then if you look at the, at the photo that I took there, and it's dated four twenty-six oh nine, it wasn't anything particular. I just happened to be out in the pasture checking the fence because the water was up, and it was an old flip phone, so the quality isn't very good. But as you can see, the, the fence that's in the water is, is basically the, the south part of Track C, and you're looking north, the lights up there are like along the interstate, and I think the ones on the, on the left side, just before you get to the trees, is the convenience store up there. So what you're looking at is basically you're looking right across where this borrow area is going to be. And I think Mr. Clausen may have mentioned that, that Southland Park side and this side are the same. Well, they're not. Southland Park is primarily fed from a twenty-four inch culvert down just before you get into the, the Southland Park houses and things. However, there's a berm, and my pasture serves as a berm from the reconstruction in nineteen ninety-four, until you get just about towards the end of the berm, and then my pasture dips down. What that does is then the majority of the floodwater veers to the right. And what, what they were talking about is at the, at the deepest cut, you've got about three feet, and yes, Bill talked about ten to one. Ten to one's okay on a driveway, but ten to one, when you have floodwater coming down there, is more than likely going to be a problem over time. And there again, like I say, you've got six hundred and sixteen times the amount of drainage that these people.
Wendell, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How are you? Thank you for allowing me this time. Gary Lutereck, forty-two eighth West Fourth Street. I live, I'm an owner. So I've got a perfect view of all this. I'm the longest person in the neighborhood, been there over ten years, so I've seen it come and go. To start off, Wendell asked me to make a major point here. We have a handout that we emailed to you all, I believe, and there's a ten twenty-two dash one regulations, general regs, land, uh, which ordinance apply in the floodways and such things. So the important thing here, I guess, is within these districts, all uses not allowed as a principal permit uses or principal as conditional uses are prohibited. Okay, you want to talk about the law? This is it. Unless a variance to the terms of the ordinance is granted due to the consideration of the Board of Adjustments. So before you can positively affirm this, the Board of Adjustment has to approve it. That's one of our points. You know, I was amazed at the previous speakers telling you how we feel. And I kind of object to that, because they don't really understand it. You know, it's all about the view you were led to believe, and I think, I don't remember any of my neighbors ever talking about the view. Okay, so this, this is an example of the deceptive nature of their arguments. On this page here in blue, this clearly describes where we're here. We're asking you to protect the neighbor's safety from the enormous dangers of borrow pit, coming hazards and dangers we described in, in, in the nature of our documents, as well as the children in the area. We also think that they could potentially, you heard Dor, Phyllis talk about the huge potential burdens down the road. I mean, you know, your ordinance, City Waterloo Goals, number eight, is to protect where neighborhoods are safe and well maintained. This is, this design is just setting up for that not to happen. So we, we think significantly reduce maintenance requirements for the minimum, protect the future owners from the flooding, and, you know, flooding only could come from the creek. Well, you know, I provided you documents in here of pictures, which they don't like very well, because it's real evidence that I took from my back porch. You know, whether it comes from the creek or somewhere else, there's a depth of water in these pictures on lots eight, nine, and ten, and half a track B. Okay? I see it all the time. You know, I mean, I live right here. Okay? Eight, nine, ten, I mean, you can't, you look out any of my windows, you see it all the time. This is what's really happening. So why are we here? I think you get a pretty good idea. You know, why are they here? Many hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, you think we're spending all this time just for fun? It's not true. So we're really here to protect the future owners and our own house and things like that. I made a few other points. You know, it doesn't fulfill all the ordinance requirements. We laid them out in red for you. We already talked about Track B is undefined. The ordinance requires Track B to be completely defined. There's a picture in here showing you that Mr. Lupkus' property, you know, while he can physically, which will be maybe another ten years or so, take care of his horses, and then he's going to move on, sell that property for development, and there's no way to get in and out. There's a picture proposed road. The ordinance says that that has to be planned for and allowed for. The same thing on the north end of the circle of the drive up here, that there's a property by one of our neighbors, there's no access to it otherwise, so he would be also infringed upon and severely burdened not to develop that. It, this does take Board of Adjustment approval. You know, we call it the borrow pit because if you want the truth, the only reason they're taking all this dirt is to save money. Okay? It's about seventy-five thousand dollars at a minimum. We estimate, it could be a different number. We're not saying that it's completely accurate. But if you look, and you also, the altruistic nature is, oh, we're doing this big pit just for everybody. It's not required, and it's also creating a lot of danger and hazards. Okay? So that's a major point. It only needs to be about sixty by sixty to tell you the truth. So passing, and passing the liability of all this stuff, the dangers, you know, if, if the homeowners don't maintain it, it's going to fall on the city. Okay? You guys are going to have to deal with the situation. I don't think that's fair to the, to the eleven unsuspecting homeowners or you. There are seventeen major cities in Iowa that we called, and they do not allow this site in the floodway or the floodplain. Thank you for your time.
Gary, excuse me, thank you very much. Kevin, your last.
My name is Kevin Courtright. I've been a lifelong resident here in Waterloo and been in the real estate business for forty-two years. I'm in an awkward position, frankly, because most of the opponents are friends or clients of mine in the past, and so it doesn't intimidate me as much as it challenges me. I came from one of nine kids, and we didn't all agree, but we, we held together, and I hope that throughout this process, we can maintain some kind of continuing friendship. I've been involved in situations where the true motivation is sometimes foggy when someone opposes something that you'd like to do. Let me paint a picture of the positive aspects of this subdivision. Having practiced the brokerage of real estate in this community, we're challenged to find locations for the right kind of housing. If you were to go out today and say you want to build a five hundred thousand dollar house in Waterloo, you'd be challenged. The approval that you gave the Skogmans recently is a very... The approval that you gave the Skogmans recently is a very nice parcel. It's restricted a little bit because it's their property and they want to do the building, and that's perfectly fine, but a lot of the people that are opposing this were able to build their homes because of an availability of lots. I might mention all, by the way, that the discredited engineering firm, Bill Claussen and his company, were the very engineering company that developed those lots. He knows that parcel better than anybody here in this room, and we have to put faith in his ability. He carries liability going forward. He's not in our pocket, he'll get paid. But the concern that's being voiced here is what about the owner's responsibility? 11 or 12 people that get to build their dream home? The density could have been doubled lawfully, we could have had 24 units proposed. But it occurs to me that there's 15 or 12 or 13 people out there that like to build a home in Waterloo, and probably have about $5 million worth of tax base, five or $6 million on a $500,000 average, $120,000 a year in property taxes. Maybe some of these kids that grew up in these homes will become future son-in-law or daughter-in-laws of the very people that are opposing it. I look at it this way. It's our responsibility to be able to convince a home buyer or a lot purchaser that we've covered our tracks. Or we'll have 11 lots that won't be sold, they'll be platted, there'll be taxes paid on them, and it won't be the neighbor's responsibility because we failed, it'll be ours. Sometimes I frown when the doctor doesn't tell me what I like to see in an X-ray, but I don't think we should discredit your staff, who personally has been challenged that they're in somehow or other in our pocket, nor do I think we should discredit Bill Claussen and his engineering group for us to rely on. This detention, retention aspect of it is our problem. If we can't sell the concept to 11 or 12 property owners that they have to maintain it. I personally would have loved to have had use of about 10 or 11 acres for my four sons to enjoy. There's some camping opportunities, there's some enjoyable time. I don't know if they'd be snowmobiling, they'd probably be doing some four-wheeling down there, but I'm comfortable with the salesmanship overcoming the objection of the responsibility to maintain this green belt. So I'm going to ask you, as a council, do what the people that you're paying to recommend, do what they suggest is the proper thing to do, and believe them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Courtwright. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all that I have signed up, that called in, that have requested to speak and requested extra time. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, either for or against, please come to the microphone.
My name is Lynde. I live at 4525 William Drive. I prepared these remarks like my husband wasn't going to be here, so the plural is for both of us. I apologize. In 2006, against everyone's advice, when we moved to town, we were told to build in Cedar Falls. We took a chance in October, long before there was a Waterloo tax abatement in effect, and started to build what the industry would call a luxury home in Nottingham Heights. Excuse me, I'm nervous. We purchased the lot at the end of William Drive at the top of the hill facing northwest. As near as I can tell online, our home is about a quarter mile from the land that is in question tonight and faces away from this property. We are not here about our views or having new neighbors. When we built, there were very few neighbors, and we enjoyed it much, we enjoy it much more now since the neighborhood has finally started growing. We care about our neighbors, want to get to know each one of them, and have hosted many all-neighborhood functions in our home. We are here to testify what we have seen regarding water since moving in in March of 2007. As the rains of '08 came, we distinctly remember seeing visible water standing outside the creek area from our home that was ever so far away. It was shocking. We testify, I testify, that we have seen water standing from our home a minimum of four times. I understand that FEMA flood maps might say something different, but that doesn't change what we know to be true. Our concern is our property values. If homes are allowed to be built, the unsuspecting new homeowners will certainly have water issues either in or around their homes. They would then have to sell their homes for a fraction of the value, and they would legally have to disclose water issues, and that markedly affects us. We are outsiders. My husband and I, neither one of us are from here or have any family here. We know next to nothing of the politics or inner workings of city government. We do not personally know any of the people involved in developing this land, and we have no judgments based on personality, past experience, or emotions. We are here to tell you simply, I am here to tell you simply that we have seen water from our home four times in seven short years. We care about our neighbors and want to try to protect the possible ones in the future from a nightmare with water. We would want others to stand up for us and stop something like this if we were the new potential buyers of land that had so much water on it. We have great concerns for the master retention pond as well. The maintenance and burden passed on to future homeowners is another reason to stand up for our possible future neighbors, but we yield that to the people that know more about that subject. On a related note, we did try to sell our home last year, as we are empty nesters now, and we don't need the large home for just the two of us. Our listing price after six years of living there was our cost of building and enough to pay Amy Wynn as our Realtor. It did not sell. We are not pressed to sell. We felt it best to take it off the market, and we will continue to live here as we love our home and our neighbors, but we feel we have to, a steep hill to climb to sell this larger home in the Waterloo market. Convincing potential buyers to take a chance on an upscale home in Waterloo like we did will not be an easy thing to do. Please don't gamble our property values even more by allowing homes to be built on land that will likely flood again.
Thank you, ma'am. You did a great job.
Thanks.
My name is Pamela Wolf. I reside at 4810 West Forest Street, and I am here representing myself and my husband Kelly, who cannot be here tonight due to a business commitment. We are opposed to the subdivision as it is currently being presented for approval. We have three areas of concern. First, we are concerned about the water issues for the future homeowners on several of the lots. Not all of them, but several of them. We built our home in 2009, and there has been flooding in that area three times. I don't know where the flooding comes from, they're talking the creek. It's generally happened when it's been heavy rains, is what we have noticed. Water sits for quite some time, and this is going to create issues in their homes. Pictures and testimonies have been presented to verify this issue exists. Secondly, we have a concern about the retention slash borrow pit. We do understand that this is required by law, but we feel it needs to be the minimum size required by the city of Waterloo. Keep in mind, there will be only 11 homeowners responsible for this area. As it sits today and is proposed, it would be too expensive for them to maintain, potentially dangerous, and eyesore, and just totally unnecessary to be the size other than to benefit the developers. Thirdly, Track B must be defined. No unknowns for the present, nor the future homeowners of this area. Mayor Clark spoke to the bakery building, wants the city to purchase it so that you know what its future is going to be. We are no different. We have no idea what Track B is going to be. We would ask that they define what they're going to do with Track B. In closing, we have heard that many of you have been told you must approve this as you have no legal reason not to. I'm not here to speak of the legalities, as that is not my area of expertise. However, there is absolutely no reason for you to have to approve lots that are going to have water issues, nor approve Track B, which has been left undefined, nor approve a crater in the ground that is at least 40 times larger than is required by law. We are here to ask that you protect the current and future homeowners, that you take into consideration the issues we all have presented. Do what is right for Waterloo and its citizens. We ask that you vote no on the approval of Nottingham Third Edition as it is presented today. We are not opposed to them putting in a subdivision back there. We've lived all over the country, I've lived in umpteen subdivisions, but it needs to be done the right way to protect all of the citizens and homeowners in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
My name is Anthony Day. I live at 4525 William Drive. A couple of things that have been said tonight, I think, are important to understand. We gave a petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission that had signatures from at least 15 of the 22 households in the Nottingham area. Several of those do not border this area, their view are not affected by that. This is not pettiness on the part of neighbors in the area. They have talked about, your experts that have looked at this, they've talked about their expertise. This is a neighborhood with a lot of professionals. You heard from two nurses tonight. I'm a physician. You heard from a couple of engineers. We are also professionals, and we're not doing this from an emotional standpoint, we're doing this from an observational standpoint of what we've seen. That little creek floods a lot. It may not flood up to the homes that are proposed every time that it floods, but there's standing water out there on a repeated basis. It is part of the drainage system that goes through all of the green spaces, you're all aware. And I will tell you that virtually every time I drive by to go to work and the floodgates are closed at Franklin Street, water has been out of that little creek, Prescott Creek as well. When it floods, it floods, and you can look, and I'm sure you all know how often those floodgates have to be closed. Water floods out of that water drainage system frequently. Now, it doesn't always reach that level, but I think one of the important things we're remembering is we're talking about flash flooding. We're not talking about a river flowing downstream and the water spreading slowly out to an even height over a large area of ground. We're talking about rapid influxes of water that cause local flooding, that's not going to be the same on both sides of the creek. The creek also sets on the east side of the green space, most of the trees which act as a buffer on the west side. So more water, besides the berm that Wendell mentioned, more water pours that direction because of those natural buffers. That's why you see more water on our side in a flash flood situation than you do on the opposite side. And finally, we've beaten to death the retention area, but I think it is important to recall that it is in the floodplain. Water from that creek, water from the drainage will go through there frequently, repeatedly, over and over, and will create a problem. I have no doubt about that. It is important that most of the communities on Iowa, that 22 of the largest communities in Iowa do not allow water like that in a floodplain. I can tell you that one of our neighbors wanted to build a pond in his area, and the DNR turned that down. Building ponds and floodplains in that area is not an easy task, and not something that you guys should take on as a city council and approve for them to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day, very much. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against? If not, we're going to have council conversation. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Renee Lupkus, and I live at 4862 West Forest Street. You know, I hear my husband talk about this daily, and I have to say, I feel like I am disappointed in the city planning and zoning staff, because I hear him tell me, and I know he's passed a lot of this information on about where there are areas where this violates the city code, and yet, planning and zoning staff recommends this for approval. I guess I'd like to see them take the time to actually investigate this and make sure things really are passing code. I think a lot of things have been kind of just let go, and like, it's okay because of this, but are they really looking at it? I'd like to see it looked at before it's passed. As other people have said, this is not really about, we don't want our view. They're more concerned about, as am I, the people that will prospectively live there, that this subdivision be done in a quality way. And there's several points on here that don't appear to be quality to me. So I would like you to make sure it's done correctly before it's done, before it's too late and there's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lupkus. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against? Counsel? Comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wolf.
Listening to the residents, I understand what you're saying when you're saying you're seeing all this water out there. This is probably a two-part question, so someone, I don't know who can answer this. I understand you're seeing water out there, but is that because the grading hasn't been done yet to accommodate the water? Secondly, if these developments are required by the state to have these detention pits, and there are some that are out there already, is there any record of any of these having chemicals, disease, or rodents in any of those pits? So I don't know who could answer those questions.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We are not aware of any, I'll go backwards, I guess, in terms of the, we're not aware of, of course, the Black Hawk County Health Department is a member of our technical review committee. We did not receive any word from them on any concerns or dangers of the detention pond. We're not aware of any outbreaks of those. I think at the planning commission, we passed out five or six different examples of existing subdivisions with fully developed homes around them with detention areas in the middle of them in Cedar Falls as examples for the planning commission. And I don't know if Mr. Young or Mr. Claussen wants to address the lack of grading on this being the next phase of the development out there in terms of the flooding. I think it would be fair if we give Mr. Young a chance to answer that, and maybe Mr. Lupkus would like to speak to it also, but Mr. Young, go ahead.
And as Bill Claussen said, this will be a dry reteneage area. We're going to have perforated tile underneath, so, you know, in a couple hours or within the day, and go down, it's not going to be holding water like a lot of reteneage ponds. I don't know, what, City Waterloo must have 100 reteneage ponds out there that she required. So this will be a dry one, 18 inches is the maximum depth on the thing. It's not a quarter of a mile long. I think if you put a ruler to it, it's 600 feet long, a foot and a half deep, less than 100 feet wide or something like that. And yes, we did oversize it. Apparently, the neighbors think we should undersize it and let that water that flow down to downtown Waterloo, you know, we'll cut it back. If you want that option, I mean, if the city wants that option, we can put it just to the size of what these 12 lots require, but you're going to, we thought we were helping you out by helping the flooding situation. They seem to think the river had, rather have a flood down the street.
Okay. How soon would this happen, Rick? Would you start to do this grading immediately, before the 11 lots are developed?
Oh, yeah, yeah. All that grading has to be done. Take the black dirt off, dig that out, dig out some borrow that we're going to get, we're going to take some. So we're going to lower the dirt and the floodside there, dig it up and put it where the rope is. And then when it's all done, you put the black dirt back on top, you seed it again, and when you see it in Google Map by next fall, it'll look just like Google Map does now. It'll be a little reteneage pond in there.
So they should no longer, so they should no longer see flooding once you're done?
Well, you're going to see flooding down along the edges, and that's what it's designed. Yeah, it's going to come out in that floodway, which is all open. That's going to be more open, yeah.
It won't look like this anymore, is what you're saying.
The other thing they're seeing with that Munchethc field the first day of the thaw last year is this storm sewer now is plugged, we found out about three-fourths plugged, it's now open. So the, when the thaw hit, the water wasn't going down the storm sewer. That storm sewer with this project gets connected, goes around, and then it dumps down into this reteneage pond. So the construction will take care of a lot of the problems we think they've had so far, but you'll still see water flooding on each side, that's what it's designed for. City Waterloo owns this, that's two feet, three feet lower. Mr. Lupkus arms it, puts his manure and stuff on it there. they've had so far, but you'll still see water flooding on each side. That's what it's designed for. City Waterloo owns this. That's two feet, three feet lower. Mr. Lupkus arms it, puts his manure and stuff on it there. I don't think, from Eric or anybody in the city, you're having tens of thousands of dollars worth of washouts on that area there or problems with it. Just give it a thought.
Thanks, Rick. Mr. Lupkus, would you like to, I would just like to get your opinion, maybe, on whether the grading and the dirt might help that situation?
Well, right. I think, you know, there's a lot of misinformation, and I think some of us just not understanding. These are not the typical type of things that you folks or most people deal with. It is what I deal with all the time. And I'm telling you, the issue is not with the flooding of those lots. It's an issue with the regulatory section of the floodplain that we've got here called the floodway. And if I might, just a second, from your own regulations, ten twenty-two one, Section A, one, lands to which the ordinance apply. This ordinance shall apply to all land within the jurisdiction of the city of Waterloo, which uses the flood insurance study as a basis for establishing the floodplain zoning districts. These districts are shown on the official zoning map as the boundaries of the floodway, floodway fringe, general floodplain, and shallow flooding overlay districts. Within these districts, all uses not allowed as principal permitted uses or permissible as conditional uses are prohibited unless a variance to the terms of this ordinance is granted after due consideration by the Board of Adjustment. And that is the case here. This requires Board of Adjustment variance because what we've got here is this is a relatively new situation, okay? We've talked about it, the requirement for detention for residential developments in the city of Waterloo is relatively new. I think somebody mentioned that we contacted the top twenty-five populous cities in Iowa, and of all of those that responded, none, I repeat, none of them allow detention facilities in either the floodplain or the floodway.
Thank you, sir.
Now, what has happened is we've gotten out in front of where our ordinances are, but the ordinance still says if it's not permitted, it needs a variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Noel, can you speak to that, please?
Most definitely.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Ten twenty-two dash two and ten twenty-two dash four do not prohibit this, so it is a principal permitted use. One of the things that they highlighted talks about excavation. That's talking about excavation or alteration of a water course. They are not altering or excavating in Prescott's Creek. This is in the section next to Prescott's Creek. We also called several cities ourselves. I'll go through these just so they keep, since they keep saying that none of them allow it. Ames does allow retention, detention ponds within the floodway or floodplain. Davenport does allow it. Sioux City does allow it. Coroville allows. Would set extra restrictions to be sure the area was naturalized with additional plantings, and they actually think they should be oversized to accommodate flooding when it occurs. Collivet allows it in the floodplain, not the floodway. Cedar Falls allows it in both. Dubuque allows it within the floodplain, not in the floodway. West Des Moines allows it within the floodplain, but a berm needs to be put above the one-hundred-year level, not allowed in the floodway. Cedar Rapids allows it in both. Marshalltown allows it in both.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
So, I have four questions, and bear with me. Let me get them all on the table, and then I have an observation. So we do not need Board of Adjustment, a decision from Board of Adjustment. That's legal, council, planning staff, everybody's opinion. Not opinion, but that's the fact, correct? You just said that was the fact, so I assume...
According to the ordinance, we do not need Board of Adjustment approval.
And then, excavation in a floodway, the argument was that's not permitted. You said it's permitted.
I'm looking for where it's actually at on here. Floodway district, again, you know, they're not, they're not actually doing anything in the floodway except for the detention pond. The following uses, again, going back to ten twenty-two dash two, the following uses shall be permitted within the floodway district. And it talks about, as long as it, they're not prohibited by another ordinance or provided they do not require placement of structures, factory-built homes, fill or other obstruction, the storage of materials or other equipment, or the excavation or alteration of a water course.
So they can excavate in the floodway?
Correct.
Then, is this detention pond forty times larger than needs to be?
That would be a question for Mr. Clausen.
I mean, he says one thing, and their expert says the other. What does the staff say? Is it forty times, we reviewed it, didn't we? Is it forty times larger or isn't it?
Bill, let's...
Terry Thorsten, City Engineer. Our staff has reviewed some calculations. It came in last week late. We typically don't have that until after the plats are approved, but they went ahead and did that, and it does show that they needed about forty-three thousand cubic feet of storage. They're providing forty-nine, so that's about six thousand more. That's not very excessive. Actually, the forty-three would meet our minimum requirement. In stormwater management, if you can retain more, that's a good thing.
So it's about what's needed?
Yes, it's not significantly larger.
Okay, and I, then, I keep hearing that this, we can't do anything about this because this request meets all the requirements, but in number six, we're approving a variance and a waiver. But I don't, what exactly is that mean?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The number six is to address two issues. Number one, to allow that the preliminary plat and final plat are heard by the council at the same meeting. So normally, there could be a time limit between the two. Since we have all the information submitted, we generally like to try to work through these things in a timely manner so that all the information is presented to the council at the same time. The second course that's in there is talking about the improvements that they talked about at the end of the cul-de-sac, going all the way to the property line. They have provided an easement in there if that were ever to occur. Obviously, they did not own the land abutting to the northwest, so they have decided to put in a cul-de-sac design, which is permitted within the subdivision ordinance regulations. Obviously, there's always options to any way you're going to lay out land. This is the way they've chosen to do it, with the concern of having that need for that road to go to the northwest and over to Rancho Road potentially in the long-term future. With the easement there, it'll still meet the regulation requirements for future development.
So the variance and the waiver have nothing to do with the retention pond?
No.
Okay. And then, this is just my view. You know, we've had several of these come to council lately, and we've always thrown the homeowners a lifeline by tabling, tabling the issue for a month or so, maybe to get the two parties. It sounds like they're getting closer together. What if, and this is a suggestion, I'm not making a motion, we can talk about it. What if we approved everything except the final plat, tabled the final plat for a period of time, so the design of the retention is defined or illustrated to the homeowners? And maybe track B that they're kind of concerned about. Would that be something that anybody would think was a good idea? I mean, we've done it four times now.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
My comment on that would be, this thing has been going on for three months. We sat through those planning and zoning meetings, and I think if you listen to both sides tonight, the chances are not good that they're going to hold hands and sing kumbaya about this deal. It's two groups of people that have very differing opinions, and as some of the people from planning and zoning said, well, our vote doesn't even matter. It's going to end up on the council's lap. And that's exactly where it is now, and I think we owe both sides an answer. I mean, we can't keep putting develop, we can't become so unfriendly to make our city even harder to do business in. So I would not support tabling it.
Okay. There hasn't been a motion for such, so let's continue conversation for the time being.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Dave's attorney, Zellafer, could I ask you a couple of questions here? And Noel, there's four different resolutions, just for the sake of clarity. Could you go over the difference with these four resolutions, please? Why we have four?
Good job, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
So the first one is the variance, so that's talking about, again, having both of them on the same agenda, and talking about the waiver of the required improvements passed the cul-de-sac to the northwest, since the cul-de-sac design has been submitted. The next one is for the preliminary plat. So there's two documents in the subdivision ordinance whenever you're plating land. The preliminary plat has certain things that are required in it, such as contours, design of streets, street layout, infrastructure. So that is the preliminary plat. The next one is the final plat. The final plat is, when you go on the Black Hawk County website or look into a normal map, and it would show the lot size with the dimensions and all that, the final plat also has deed of dedication and more legal documents, so it's more of what's officially filed as the map. It doesn't show all the contours and all that for legal purposes. And number eight, they're just asking to change the name of one of those streets out there, the small section from Crusade to Shelley.
Okay. And what is the difference in these four resolutions as opposed to a zoning request or change? What's the difference as far as when it comes to the council, what we are required to look at, and how it affects the neighborhoods and the neighborhood input or the neighbors' input on both of those? Will there be a zoning request or change, or whether it be a plat request?
Some of the differences between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, so in the zoning ordinance, they're asking to rezone land like they did ten years ago on this one. They're asking for a change. They're asking for something to be altered from what it currently exists as. Obviously, this one went from A-one to residential zoning classification R-one. That was a request they made. They laid out plans to show how it would be developed, but the council still has some discretion to decide, is this what we want this to be rezoned as? Do we feel that we want this to be developed residentially? Is there concerns about it? There's also portions of the state code that have certain voting requirements by the council. If there's a certain amount of opposition within two hundred feet, you go to the supermajority and all that in a zoning request. In the subdivision ordinance, as I think several people have noted, it's more of a technical document. You know, the land has been zoned properly. It's been zoned R-one for residential development, so now they're coming along with the next step in the process to develop the land, which is to submit a plat and meet all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, which lists a lot of things such as street design, street width, exactly how it's going to be, infrastructure's going to be provided to it, new infrastructure mains and all that. And then there's no, there's nothing in there to change it from a normal, simple majority vote by the council regardless of the amount of percentage of opposition.
Okay. And, Mr. Zellafer and Noel, are there any places in any of these four resolutions and any of the conversation or anything that you've read that show that the city code has been violated or will be violated if we approve this?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, you know, in the seven years I've been on the council, I get around to Alabar Hills Neighborhood Association meetings and Cedar Terrace meetings and a variety of different meetings, and I hear people talk about how, you know, based on things that have happened over the last five or ten or fifteen years, development things, that these folks now have water issues that they didn't have before. And I think my biggest concern, and I think for several other council members too, is, on the one hand, we certainly would love to see this development, because as Mr. Court right mentioned, this is just prime development opportunity here and the kind of development that those of us that were involved in the CLRA were looking for. And so from that perspective, I'd very much like to vote in favor of this. By the same token, I am concerned about the potential for water issues, and I am not an engineer, but I'm hearing conflicting testimony. And, you know, we got several-page document here in the last couple of days that had a variety of questions, some of which have been answered, some of which have not. And so, therefore, I would support Mr. Lynn's idea of tabling this for four weeks to get answers to all those questions, to be able to make a calm, logical, unemotional decision, and then move on. And I think when we're talking about the kind of money that some of these folks have invested in their homes, the kind of money that the developers have invested so far to delay it for four weeks, I think is just a pretty minor issue. So I would make that motion to table this for four weeks.
I second that.
Okay.
So just for clarification, you were tabling the variance and the final plat?
Yes.
Well, you'd have to... Yeah, let's, I don't want to cloud the issue, but we took all four items, read them all four at once. It seems only appropriate that they either all pass or they all don't. Madam Clerk, if there's something procedurally wrong with that, I will yield to that, but it seems as though we should, they should pass or fail or be tabled as a group of four.
I'm going to defer to Noel. I don't think procedurally there's a right or a wrong in that, but as far as doing it, staff would be agreeable to doing it.
To all four of them? Okay, either, okay.
But these guys need to change their motion.
For whatever my opinion is worth to council, I tend to agree with Ms. Cole, but I don't think there's going to be any movement. Council has had ample time to get any questions answered that might come up. You've had lots of opportunities, and I believe that these folks on both sides deserve an answer, but it's your choice to make. There's been a motion, and there's been a second to table. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Mayor, what...
Just to clarify, did you want to change your motion to tabling of the resolution?
I'm sorry, that's correct.
And again, just to set the table straight or the thing straight, this is the first time this has come to the city council. It's been planning and zoning. I've been to those meetings. I've heard those questions. I didn't see everybody else there, but I've been to those meetings. All the questions that I've received in the last couple of days were not asked at those meetings.
Okay.
And to put some huge reason to get this thing done now, I just think that's pretty short-sighted.
Okay. Well, motion to table all four, and a second on that. And Madam Clerk, if you could read the roll, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
No.
Mr. Welber?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, motion to table passes. I guess, wait a minute, we didn't, or no, did you say four weeks?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that's what's the date as, what?
The twelfth. Yeah.
Okay, this matter is tabled till the twelfth. Will, Mr. Young, you have a question?
More of a procedural question.
Okay.
With the difference between the preliminary plat and the final plat, that delay, are you asking to get more thorough, like, construction plans and that sort of thing to see? Is that a request? Because I think that doesn't start until the preliminary plat is approved, and that's the part of the process. And so I would say if you're tabling it and you want more information from the developer as to what that would be, that would come from preliminary plat approval before final plat.
Okay. Could, Mr. Schmidt, you're the one that offered the motion. Could you articulate what questions that you don't?
I would love to, and I don't know, Mr. Young, if you saw the, you know, the several-page list of questions that we received. So I believe there are questions on there, some of which are for your group and some of which are for city staff.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to see all those questions answered. I'll leave it up to you, which are yours and which are theirs, but I'd just like to see those questions answered. I'd also like to suggest to the homeowners, if they have any more questions, to get those to you all between now and the twelfth of January, because come the twelfth of January, I'd like to see all questions asked and answered. to see all questions asked and answered, and then we can maybe have a short discussion and then make a decision.
Okay, I'll refer to Mr. Fosse on this, and I understand that with, um, part of the process, no construction can happen without final plat approval, but I think in terms of the, uh, the planning and the construction plans that would get to some of those issues, for that we need to have preliminary plat approval. Um, and so that's what I'm asking now, if you consider doing the prelimi- voting on the preliminary plat and then tabling the final plat until later, I don't know if the street name matters, the variance in that case would be taken off. And so it just procedurally, that's what I'm.
Well, and, and maybe I was in, in error when I suggested that all four of them, Noel, do you see, um, I, I, I guess, I mean, why can't the questions be answered?
I don't know why they can't be either. I, in fact, I think they've already probably have that, it's just that you've had more, you have this answer and you've got this answer.
Yeah. I, I, hey. I just, I say I don't necessarily wanna revisit bringing something back if things can be answered that are on that questionnaire.
You don't think we need to revisit this vote? I mean, are you, are you okay with the four, the four items being tabled?
Well, I think he's asking. If you have questions, I'd be very happy to answer them. We, what, what we have submitted has been reviewed by your staff, and I think that they're in agreement with what you've said.
Well, and I don't know if you saw the list of all the questions that we had today, Bill, but I saw questions on there that I haven't seen answers to. Now, whether they were questions for you or questions for our staff, I don't know.
And I guess for the procedural matter in terms of answering those, I think it would help with preliminary plat approval to go forward with the construction plans for the detention area, but without final plat approval.
Mr. Young, it's gonna be difficult for us to revisit and bring that back tonight. Let's, let's start with trying to answer the questions that Mr. Schmidt has, has submitted or, or somebody else has submitted. The residents submitted, and i- if, if we get to some that can't be answered without preliminary plat approval, we'll revisit that at a future date prior to the four weeks. Is, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we ask you one question?
Sure.
The residents want a smaller detention pod, is that?
Then, then what we were gonna do, we were gonna do it for the whole deal, so we will placate them, design a smaller retention pod.
Mr. Young, I'm sorry, I don't know which questions Mr. Schmidt is, is referring to that he wants answered, so.
I don't know, he's asking for answers to questions, so that was one that came up. We were, ourselves and the, the neighbors were on different sides of that, they want a minimum one, we went for maximum.
Let's, again.
Well, to me, that, that's a question then that's answered, that, I mean, it's, it's either way, either way you're willing to do that, correct? So that question's answered.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that question's answered.
But, but let us know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those four items, and, and let's work together to try to look at the questions that have been submitted from the neighborhood group, and let's, uh, if there are some that we can't get answered without the preliminary approval, Mr. Young, we will do that. Bring that back to council for approval. Let's, uh, continue with the last two items, there's 19 and 20, we can take those together. Mr. Mayor.
I, I, I'm sorry. Can I, can I just ask for a little?
Sure.
I'm a little confused as to what's going to happen between now and January 12. Did I understand, Mr. Young, to say that, uh, there will be approaches to the city council to talk about this between now and January 12?
No, I, I don't think that's the case, Mr. Stiglitz. My only, uh, I, I'm always a little confused about what council wants when we table items also, so we'll need to.
As long, as long as we have the assurance of the city council that this thing, we're not gonna be blindsided by them coming in in a week or two and making applications, and that whatever happens is going to happen on January 12.
You will be fully aware of anything that would happen prior to that, if there would be something that would happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Would, would it be safe to say then, all the information has been submitted, like the blind side, the 12, 15 page thing that came in today from the neighbors? I mean, can we say that's done, the hearing's done? Let's answer those questions and, and vote on it next week? Or are we gonna have another 10, 15 pages?
On the day of.
That's how I do it, I, I just keep submitting, you just stall it whichever question's the last day.
That, that was part of what I said, is for them to get those questions in, and that we have all questions asked and answered by the 12th of January.
So they are in, all, all these that, that were submitted today, all are?
Mr. Young, is your question that, um, on the date of the 12th, you don't receive another 25 questions that need to be answered during the meeting and then just would push it back? I think that's, I think that's your question, so, um, I don't even know what a timeframe would be for, um, other questions submitted in, in addition to the sheet that we received. Uh, I guess that would be a council's decision, so that they could have adequate time to be able to answer, um, any questions put forth.
January 5th.
Who, who, uh, who authored and submitted the list of questions that we received today from the homeowners group?
Mr. Lutere.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lutere, may I assume that that's all of the questions that, that the?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, could, could I make a request that all questions from the neighborhood group be submitted by a date certain, uh, January 5th?
What, on the next week? So then you got through.
Okay, Mr. Lutere, come forward, please, if you would, so.
Let me look at the calendar.
Uh, I, I just, again, Mr. Schmidt, I, I don't know what you want, so would you ask?
I, I don't know how much clearer I can make it. We got this list of questions that we did not have answers to all of them. In the last couple of days, we got the list of questions. Some of them got answered, some of them haven't, and I'd like to, I'd like to be able to make a vote based on as much information that we can get, so I would think you're, you're probably gonna go, maybe a few more questions, probably not a lot, I wouldn't think they're gonna require a lot of, uh, time to gather the response. Uh, I'm not an engineer, but, uh.
I don't know how long it takes with our responses, I can't.
Today, today is, um, the 15th of December.
But I think the 5th would.
I- i- if we have not received further questions by January 5th, can we assume that, that your questions have been submitted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another question, is that a reasonable expectation for you? I mean, if you get 100 questions by the 5th, is that the appropriate time? If not, we may as well say December 31st, the end of the year, and then that will give, um, 12 days to, almost two weeks to get them done. So.
Make, make your statement. Yes, sir.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, I mean, given the amount of time this has been at Planning Commission, the council, I think we should give them to December 22nd, that gives them one week, and depending upon the detailed needs of their questions, that will give us time to answer them over the holidays. So I would think they should turn in all their questions by December 22nd.
Does, does that work for council? To have any further community questions?
Yes.
Okay, uh, a- any further community, uh, uh, neighborhood questions should be submitted by the 22nd?
That doesn't give us adequate time.
Well.
How about we split the difference? How about we, two, two weeks, so the 29th? So they got two weeks to get the questions, the developers have two weeks to answer. Is that equitable to me?
At, at this point, I think we need to make a decision, you put it on the floor, the 29th to get the questions in, so we can do as Carolyn said, move this ahead, yes or no, on the date of the 12th. So the 29th, um, we'd like to have those questions submitted, and those will go to, those will go to.
Play for.
Planning Department, Planning Department will dispatch those to the appropriate places so we can get these questions answered and move on with this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I am fascinated because I have been deluged with documents from the opponents of this. This is Mr. Lutere's, which I received at 10:30 on Sunday morning. Um, there's another one, I think, floating around that our staff has answered some questions in red, so if we could have all the documents consolidated, then I think maybe we would see the questions probably have an answer, if we get them all in one place.
Okay.
Good point.
Noel, if you could try to do that for us, please, and if there's any future questions, Mr. Lutere, I think the council has indicated the 29th is the deadline for those to be submitted. Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
I can make a motion to approve change order number three for net decrease of $111,705.70 for rehabilitation of Taxway E for the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And number 20, I move to approve change order number seven for net increase of $24,973.88 for the FY 2014 Kimball Avenue Transportation Improvements, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions regarding either one of those issues, 19 or 20?
No.
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. Uh, it is time for oral comments, uh, let's, let's maybe give it just a couple of minutes for the room to clear here with the folks that are leaving, and if there's anyone that has any comments for the mayor or the council tonight, now is the time to do so. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Now, Jack Black, 227, Downey. Resolution number 11, I see that the roof development, which is, uh, building at East Third and Lafayette, which is, hasn't approved.
Mm-hmm.
But my question is, well, that's writing back to Queen of Peace, formerly St. Joseph's as of 1900. Now, I'd like to know, if anybody knows here, how he can call that St. Joseph's Square? Where is he getting permission to do this?
Well, uh, Jack, I have to be honest with you, I don't know. I don't know if he needs permission to call his own development whatever he wants to. Does anybody know? Mr. Zellifer, Mr. Anderson, anybody? No? I mean, if he's not renaming a street, uh, he's just naming his project, I, I don't
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, as long as it's not in conflict with an existing, uh, subdivision, the auditor's office of the county approves it, um, and he's good to go.
I, I wasn't aware there was an issue, Mr. Black, but if there is, maybe we can talk to John.
I was just wondering how he can go ahead and name a project, uh, after St. Joseph's, uh, basically. I mean, that's, that, I don't understand.
Okay, so is, I, I'm, I'm assuming that you're objecting to it?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, let me, let me find out and, and, and see, uh, I, I, I would, I would assume that Mr. Ruse probably thought he was doing it, uh, very positively. Uh, if, if there's a negative connotation to that, or if there's objection to that, we'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what kind of jurisdiction we will have to get him to change it, but I'll, I'll have, I'll have the conversation.
John Sherman, 1715, Robin Road. Earlier, um, we had a little issue going with the City of Hope. I'm pretty sure on my memory on this, but it seemed like this started a month ago, and a gentleman got up here and he says, "This is gonna be my dime, I'll get ahold of the, the people that are necessary for, uh, pres- preservation of the arts or whatever, and I'll take care of it," and.
Just, just a second, John. Guys, we just, if we could have, thank you, appreciate it. John?
Anyway, uh, I was pretty sure I heard that right, because I was sort of disappointed that, um, when we think about our, our moms without, uh, as much troubles as the, they go through trying to raise kids by themselves, and a lot of the things that I've seen with the various issues come up, but, and I thought, well, too, yeah, we need to redo some of these old houses, but then after I heard about how bad a shape it was and what it was gonna cost and whatever, I was a little disappointed, but tonight we get up here, now we're not dealing with the, uh, gentleman that's gonna do it on his dime and with his, uh, resources, uh, to put together funding, he's doing it with a corporation that's gonna turn around and lease the back, and I was pretty disappointed when I heard that, because, you know, uh, it's pretty hard to get anything going in Waterloo that, uh, that helps the moms. I know there's some churches and stuff that have put together some homes, usually they have quite a few regu- rules and regulations that they have to stumble through, but I was pretty disappointed, and I think there's probably other, a few other people too, you know. All of a sudden, we're not dealing with that same guy that was gonna do it, and this was the last second, you know, we're gonna tear it down tomorrow, operation, and then this guy jumps up and says, "I'm gonna do it on my dime," and now, well, we got a corporation and profit involved. Thank you.
Forrest Dillawood, 1725 Huntington Road. If we'd have had this kind of discussion about Area 15 and 16, we wouldn't have flooded basements and have to spend thousands of dollars to fix our footing drains. One of those bids came in at $4,000, a man in his 80s is gonna have to spend $4,000 to get his done. Just thought I'd mention that. I was up here a couple of weeks ago and talked about a rabbit that, a rabbit that the Waterloo Police had to go out on Eastern Avenue and put down. They went out again on December the 10th at 9:06 in the evening to put down a raccoon. Can't we buy that person out there a pellet gun so we don't have to send our officers out there, pull them off the street? They're out here chasing gunfire, they're out here, people with belly wounds, I mean, they've got enough to do without going out there and putting down rabbits and raccoons. I could do it with a ball bat or a, it's gotta be a simpler way, less, trained people. Thank you.
Good evening, Josh Wilson, 2831 Saratoga. Couple of questions and then just a couple of comments. I'm a bit confused on last week's travel request, um, to Paris. Uh, it's getting a lot of publicity, there's a lot of, uh, people out there talking about it. Hey, what I don't understand and what I'd like, last week I asked the question from this very podium, which airline was being used, and I never got an answer to that question. I had to read it in the paper, that we are no longer paying for the air travel portion of that trip, that cannot be paid for out of the grant money because of the Fly America Act, it was all spelled out pretty clearly. Um, my question is, why are we not changing our expense allowance for this trip now? Uh, I, the answer I keep getting is, the 4,800 that we approved is a cost not to exceed. Uh, so in other words, we're giving them $4,800 and they're not gonna exceed that on their trip, I understand that, but common sense to me, everybody that spoke tonight either had five minutes or three minutes not to exceed, and almost all of us went over it. And so I have no, and there's no private business out there that would allow, my point is, $1,700 was allocated for airfare, and that's not being spent on airfare anymore. Why does they, why do they still get to keep $1,700 in their travel expense allowance? That should be subtracted from, that you, I feel you should amend that travel, uh, portion, since you're not, I mean, it was sold to the council, and by the way, when I asked what airline they were flying, the answer to that question was known, it just wasn't given to me. I knew that when I asked the question.
Mr. Wilson, I, everything else you can say, I'll take offense to that. I did not know what airline.
I didn't say you did.
You said was known. I'm not sure.
It is, it was known by your city staff.
I wish you asked that, I did not know what.
It was known by your city staff as it was relayed to me by the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs.
Okay.
They were flying.
I'm not sure who knew that, I did not know.
I'm just saying, I'm, I, I'm just saying, the answers to questions should be, should be given, and if, if anyone on city staff knows an answer, they should give it.
Okay, we are obligated to provide documents when asked for, it's, the state says that we have to comply with that, it's the open records request.
Right.
I am obligated to allow people come to the microphone by our council policy to make statements. We are not obligated to answer questions, engage in dialogue or conversation. We can if we want, we don't have to, we're not obligated to do that.
Okay, so you're, are you prepared to go on record and say you're not going to answer questions from taxpaying citizens when they come to the microphone?
That's not at all what I said.
Do I have to pay? Do I have to pay for it?
That's not at all what I said.
Okay.
We're not obligated to do that.
Okay, I don't know why you'd bring that up, I, I'm asking a simple question, that the answer was known by the person submitting the request, but in my, just to get my, uh, point out there, $1,700 is no longer being spent on airfare.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, uh, your time's up.
You have been engaging with me throughout my time, so I'm going to assume you use some of that three minutes. I would like the council members.
Your three minutes are up, Mr. Wilson, thank you very much. You are answering, asking questions, and I answered them, and your three minutes are up.
I didn't ask for you to answer before my time.
Anyone else would like to speak to the council tonight? Council, do you have any comments?
Well, um, one of the things that I, I wanted to ask Dave Zellifer was, and we had a brief discussion here, and that is, when we make a motion, such as was made tonight to, to table, um, can that be brought back up for reconsideration at that same meeting,